Service of a town meeting warrant and there is a cure. That cure is to request the governor's office to file special legislation ratifying the actions taken by this special town meeting, notwithstanding the delay in the public posting. Concord has done this once before in connection with a town election warrant and another town filed such legislation with respect to its town meeting warrant in just the past year. The town is grateful to the officers of Senator Barrett and Representative Atkins for their help in filing the necessary bill, which was in fact filed with the legislature on September 25th and is moving along in the process. We have every expectation that the bill will pass shortly. Once it is passed, there will be no question with respect to the validity of any action taken tonight due to the 24-hour delay in part of the public posting of our warrant. We're very grateful tonight to Superintendent Hunter, Principal Mastrolo, the Regional School Committee, and the faculty, students, and staff of the high school for accommodating us here this evening, assisting us with preparation of the meeting, and bearing with the disruption that we caused. This evening, the auditorium is the venue for the meeting and voting will take place only in the auditorium unless we exceed the capacity in the auditorium and find it necessary to open the gymnasium for overflow. In the event that we do open the gymnasium, the deputy town moderator, Ms. Carolyn Flood, will preside in the gym. You will be able to hear and observe the meeting and vote in the overflow space in the gymnasium. However, you will not be able to comment from the floor in there. You will only be able to comment from the floor in the auditorium. We'll remind you about that in the event we have to open the gym for overflow. The meeting proceedings also will be broadcast in the cafeteria for those who wish to follow along from there, but no voting will take place in the cafeteria. And the meeting also will be broadcast live on our local cable access network, Minuteman Media Network formerly known as CCTV, and on the high school's radio station WIQH at 88.3 FM. I would now like to invite Fire Chief Tom Judge to come to the podium to tell us what we need to know in the unlikely event of an emergency this evening. Chief Judge.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In the auditorium, we have exits at the top, two exits at the top and the rear. Thank you. On this level, there's two exits to my right and to my left. In the gymnasium, if anybody's in there, there's exits in all four corners. In the cafeteria, exits on the glass wall leading out to the courtyard. If anyone's taking advantage of the childcare, we would ask you to, in the event that we have to evacuate the building, please meet in the courtyard where your children will be brought by the childcare staff. Don't go to the childcare to try and retrieve them because they won't be there. They'll meet you in the courtyard. Beyond that, try and keep the aisles clear and no storage in the aisles. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Chief, and for that safety briefing and for all that you do. I'd also like to thank Chief O'Connor and the officers of the Concord Police Department who are here to protect and serve us tonight as they are every day. And I've also been asked by the town moderator of Andover to express to our public safety departments and our town the gratitude of the communities of Andover, North Andover, and Lowell for the critical assistance provided to them during their still ongoing natural gas crisis. You may have seen the newspaper photo of Concord and Lowell fire trucks side by side during the crisis. I know we all wish those communities a speedy return to normal. As I mentioned, Ms. Carolyn Flood of 1289 Main Street, who was elected last April by annual town meeting to serve as the deputy town moderator, will be serving in that capacity this evening. There are a variety of materials pertaining to tonight's meeting available on the tables in the cafeteria. All of those materials are also available on the town website. And the website address is up there, ConcordMA.gov. The materials are found under the Town Meeting tab. Wi-Fi is available here in the high school. And I believe the network name is CCHS Guest. And if you click on that, you'll find a series of prompts which include getting a password texted or emailed to you and you can get onto that network. Among the materials, you will find the Finance Committee's recommendations. There's no report this time of year, but there are recommendations by the Finance Committee on tonight's articles. And we thank the Finance Committee and Finance Director Carrie LeFleur for preparing those recommendations for us. The green booklet entitled, or I should say, the usually green booklet entitled Concord Town Meeting and Traditions and Procedures is a useful guide to our proceedings this evening. I invite you to pick up a copy. It's white tonight, same material. If you do have any questions about town meeting procedure, please feel free to talk with our Town Meeting Procedure Resource Person, Johanna Glazer. Ms. Glazer is over there waving. And if you do wish to consult with her on process issues, for example, assistance in drafting and presenting a motion or amendment, Ms. Glazer is your person. If you are a registered voter in Concord, you should have received a voting slip that looks like this, seasonal orange. When you checked in, you'll want to keep your voting slip handy so that you are able to raise it for votes by a show of hands and in a standing counted vote. Your voting slip is what identifies you as a person entitled to vote. And writing your name on it, although not in this area where the secret ballots are, is probably a good idea. If you are a resident of Concord who is not registered to vote or a visitor to tonight's meeting, you should have checked in as a visitor out in the cafeteria and you should have a visitor badge. And you should be seated in the visitor location. I don't actually know where that is this evening. In the back. Where is it? Last two rows in the back, on the right side. Thank you very much. I have appointed Mr. Abe Fisher of 400 Hayward Mill Road to be head teller, Mr. David Carr of 82 Lawsbroke Road to be ballot supervisor, and Mr. Richard Wells of 368 Lawsbroke Road as deputy ballot supervisor. Mr. Fisher will be supervising vote counting on the floor in the event of a counted vote and Mr. Carr, with the assistance of Mr. Wells, will be supervising the ballot counting procedure and vote certification in the event that the meeting votes for a paper ballot on a motion. Mr. Fisher, are the tellers ready to be sworn?
We are.
Mr. Carr, are the ballot counters ready to be sworn?
We are.
Tellers and ballot counters, would you all please stand and raise your right hand? Does each of you swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform your respective duties at this town meeting? Thank you very much. On behalf of the meeting, I thank Mr. Fisher, Mr. Carr, Mr. Wells, and each and every one of our tellers and ballot counters for taking on this vital town meeting function. And if we do, all of you, call upon you to count a vote, please do remember to count your own. A number of additional thank yous are in order this evening to the team of people who've made it possible for us to hold tonight's meeting in the smooth and orderly way to which we've become accustomed. We have public works staff who helped us set up. We have our CPR and first aid certified childcare sitters, our town clerk staff, our town manager staff, and a very special thank you to our town meeting coordinator, Heather Butler, who has organized all the moving pieces that have come together to make tonight's meeting possible. And thank you also to the Minuteman Media Network who just this evening officially took over the responsibilities of CCTV. I now call on scouts Miles Inman and Will Duggan of Troop 132 in Concord to bring the flags forward. Thank you, gentlemen. Before we begin the business of this special town meeting, let us remain standing and hold a moment of silence. Tonight, we are Concord's legislature. Because we are here not only as private citizens but also as legislators, we must bear in mind as we cast our votes, not only our personal interests but also those of our community as a whole. As we deliberate, let each of us here tonight maintain an open mind, an open heart, graciousness when we disagree, and a healthy sense of humor so that the debates of this meeting will not be a source of division among us when our business here is finished. Thank you and please be seated. The minutes of the meeting will be kept by town clerk Kari Tari, who is sitting here to my right. Our select board is seated at a table here in front of the stage in the center. Our school committee is over there. And our finance committee is in the front row down here. And I'd like to note that your fellow Concord citizens serving on these boards and committees are all volunteers and they're doing important and interesting work that's critical to our town and getting an opportunity to know our community more deeply. And you too may gain this privilege by filling out a green card, which is out in the hallway, to volunteer for one of our many boards or committees. You can also find a green card located on the town website that you can download and fill out or fill out online. I'd also like to remind everyone this year to fill out the official town government survey. One of these came to every household in Concord and only one can be filled out per household. And the preferred means of filling it out is online and there's a special code in the one that was mailed to your house that allows you to fill out the survey online. As of 9:00 this morning, 812 households, which is only about 11% of the households in Concord, had filled out the survey. The deadline for this survey to be completed is the 12th of October. And it's a very useful thing in terms of feedback to town government in terms of what we all care about as citizens. So please do, if you haven't filled it out yet at your house, go ahead and do that. Mr. McCain moves that the reading of the warrant and the return of service thereon be omitted. Is there a second? I see that there is. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor raise their ballots. Thank you. Anybody opposed, raise your ballots. I see that that motion carries by a large majority, perhaps unanimously, and I declare that it is a vote. It is the hope and the goal of the moderator to conclude this special town meeting tonight. We have 13 articles on the special town meeting warrant, 11 of which will be moved. There's no consent agenda. And I want you all to please note that we do not have tonight the motion to take up no business, no new business after 10:00. And we'll now proceed to Article 1. And I think we've probably already noted when Chief Judge came up that the podium for speakers this evening is on the stage and it's accessed right where the town manager is demonstrating. Why don't you wave, Chris? Right over there. The motion for Article 1 is on the screen. It is that Mr. Whalen moves that the town take affirmative action on Article 1 as printed in the handout applicable to this article. Do we have a second? I see that we do. Thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Whalen.
Chris Whalen, town manager. I live at 1935 Main Street. The first three articles on the warrant tonight concern land that was formerly owned by the W.R. Grace Corporation, which was taken by the town by eminent domain in August of 2015. These first three articles are all the primary reason why the special town meeting was called this fall. Article 1 requests that the town vote to appropriate $300,000 as additional compensation to the W.R. Grace Company for land the company once owned in Concord. Let me review where the land is and some of the history that led up to its acquisition by the town. This aerial photo shows the W.R. Grace property, which abuts the corporate boundary between the towns of Concord and Acton. To orient you, the Thoreau School is shown on the right. The Valley Sports skating rinks are in the lower left. The W.R. Grace still owns 130 acres in the town of Acton adjacent to their former Concord property. The small parcel outlined in red in the lower left-hand corner is the property at 37 Knox Trail in Acton, which Concord purchased to provide access to the Grace site. This aerial photo shows how we are using the land today, which is outlined in orange, with the new school bus maintenance facility in the lower left-hand corner of the property, including parking for 45 school buses and 45 driver's vehicles. We also leased some of the land to a third party. Back up one more. There we go. Thank you, Heather. We leased land to a third party who developed a 4.6 megawatt solar power generating facility, which is now providing about 5% of the electricity that we use in Concord. These are the, next slide, please. These are the solar panels up close. Next. Here's a photo of the Knox Trail Office Building, which houses the school bus drivers, the school transportation administrative staff, as well as our regional affordable housing folks. Here's the driveway connecting Knox Trail to the former W. Grace property and our new school bus facility. And here's the new school building in operation on a cloudy day. The select board engaged in negotiations with the company to purchase the property before eminent domain was considered. Talks started in November of 2011 and agreement on price came pretty quickly. In April of 2012, the town voted to authorize the select board to purchase the property for municipal purposes for $1.2 million. From May of 2012 till April of 2015, discussions continued but were ultimately unsuccessful. The assumption of the liability for the environmental cleanup and creation of a road through the Concord land to access the land in Acton were the primary sticking points. The 68-acre parcel lacked direct access to Knox Trail, so in April of 2014, Town Meeting voted to authorize the purchase of the office building and the one acre at 37 Knox Trail shown earlier. This now provides access to the site. Talks with W.R. Grace broke down formally in February of 2015 and in April of that year, Town Meeting voted to take the property by eminent domain. The taking was completed in August of 2015 and an $800,000 payment was made to the company at that time. The company could not challenge the taking itself, but would have up to three years to challenge the compensation paid for the land. In April of 2017, the company provided notice to the town that they believed the eminent domain taking of their property in Concord caused a loss of $7.1 million in value to their land in Acton. And the company demanded the $6.3 million additional compensation. The town has had, the W.R. Grace property in Concord appraised several times. In 2012, Boston Property Advisors valued the property at $2.5 million, but that valuation assumed that there was access to the site, which there was not. In 2015, in preparation for the eminent domain taking, John Avery Associates of Acton valued the property at $800,000, noting that the land had limited development potential due to access and zoning limitations. The Concord assessors valued the property at $1.8 million in 2015. Since the property lacked frontage on a public street, the assessors simply used the standard value for an acre of backland without frontage on a street and multiplied that by the number of acres in the parcel. The company informed the town that had had an independent appraisal done of the property by Colliers International, which placed the value at the $7.1 million, primarily due to the reduction of value in Acton. In settlement discussions, the company initially requested $2.5 million. They later stated that the town should at least pay what the assessors had the property valued for, the $1.8 million. After several months of discussion, the company agreed to accept compensation midway between the assessors' value of $1.8 million and the original sale price agreed upon by the parties at $1.2 million. So the total financial compensation to the company would be $1.5 million. At the time of the taking, in August of 2015, a pro tanto payment of $800,000 was made, as was required by law. When the settlement agreement was finalized this June, an interim payment of $400,000 was made, bringing the total up to the $1.2 million as authorized by Town Meeting in 2012. The additional compensation required to finalize the settlement is the amount requested tonight, or $300,000. In conclusion, the settlement agreement with W.R. Grace contains three parts. First, this Article 1 is $300,000 of additional compensation. Second, an easement across the 37 Knox Trail property and the land that Concord took from Grace, which will be dealt with under Article 2. And then third, a zoning bylaw amendment to make that emergency access and allowed municipal use. The settlement seems like a reasonable resolution of the matter concerning the proper payment of the taking of the company's land. We've put the property to good municipal use and may one day use it to help with our wastewater treatment needs. And I recommend your favorable action on Article 1.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. We'll hear now from Ms. Kaufman from the Select Board. I want to note that the Finance Committee recommends affirmative action on Article 1. And I want to take a moment to thank Stephanie Farrell, who's, you'll see there is the transcription of the proceedings on the screen there as we go along for those of us who process better visually than with our ears. And she does a wonderful job. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. I'm Alice Kaufman, 1615 Lowell Road, member of the Select Board and speaking on the board's behalf.
Ms. Kaufman.
Madam Moderator. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 1. You heard a very good presentation from Chris and I'm going to just do a quick synopsis of all that stuff that happened over the last number of years. The town has spent many years and countless hours discussing solutions for managing our school bus fleet. Chief among them was where to park the buses and where we were going to service them. Many of you were probably here at town meeting year after year when we talked about what to do with our buses. Town meeting approved that we acquired the W.R. Grace property and, as you heard from Chris, had authorized an amount far in excess of what we originally, what we ended up paying the company. They did appeal sometime later, after we built the bus barn, after we built the solar field. And their claims were for damages that they lost for potential development because of our taking. We entered into settlement discussions with them and we managed to come out of those settlement discussions with a very good deal for Concord. The damages claim does necessitate that we come back to town meeting. And it's always difficult to come back here to ask for additional funds above which were already approved by town meeting. But recognizing the value of the damages lost to W.R. Grace, and you saw that figure of $6.3 million was the price that they had asked that we pay for those damages, a mere $300,000 is a really good deal for what we got out of it. And so the Select Board unanimously urges affirmative action on Article 1.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Are there questions or comments from the floor? We have microphones in the aisle down here. Microphones 1 and 2 and microphones 3 and 4 are in the back. Microphone number 4.
My name is Nancy Brown. I live at 96 Forest Ridge Road and I am speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle.
Thank you. Proceed.
The league recommends a yes vote on Article 1.
Thank you. Microphone number 1.
Sherry Fletcher, 102 Prairie Street. Just, it's a dumb question maybe, but I thought during the town meeting last year, we approved the $1.5 million? Did we? No?
Mr. Whalen, you want to respond?
No. No additional financial compensation was discussed last year.
So how did we pay the 800 and plus the other 400 to $1.2 million? And now we're asking for 3, I think?
So in 2012, Town Meeting authorized the Select Board to buy the land in the amount of $1.2 million and authorized that borrowing from the, half from the electric fund and half from the sewer fund to pay for that. So that spending authorization carried forward so that when the taking took place, Town Meeting authorized the taking and the payment of $800,000, which was the appraised value at the time, utilizing that previous authorization in 2012. Does that make sense?
So how did it go to $1.5 then after 2012?
So we're back here today to ask, we utilized the full $1.2 million Town Meeting had authorized earlier. The company will not take anything less than $1.5 million. So we're here to ask if the town would consider, you know, providing an additional $300,000.
So I'm just wondering, why didn't we approve the $1.5 if that's all, if that's what they wanted to take? Why didn't we approve that?
They just agreed to that this past May.
Oh.
They wanted substantially more than that.
So is this the final amount or are they going to come back again?
This is the final amount. We have a signed settlement agreement that will put it to bed.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Microphone number 4.
Gregor McGregor, 70 Williams Road.
Mr. McGregor.
Mr. Whalen, in his excellent presentation, mentioned that there was a sticking point of hazardous waste liability that undid some earlier discussions. I wonder if he knows whether this settlement of the eminent domain value of the land does or doesn't resolve or leave unresolved anything about hazardous waste liability.
Mr. Whalen, if you want to take that, that's great. We also, I note, have Town Council, Mina Marcarius from Anderson Krieger here with us.
Why don't we have Town Council answer that? My understanding is that at the time of the taking, we took the real estate without taking any of the environmental obligation. The company signed two different consent agreements with the U.S. EPA that they would clean up the property and they did not try to pass that on to the new owner, which is the town of Concord. So I believe that's been completely addressed. Do you want to confirm that?
There's no way, no good way to do this with the microphones.
Madam Moderator, the answer is exactly as Mr. Whalen described. In addition, at a prior town meeting, I believe 2016 or 17, you also approved an easement to W.R. Grace to continue accessing its site to implement the ongoing remedy that they have on the site. And so that, they have that access and that is continuing to be their responsibility.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, it looks to me like, oh, I'm very sorry. Something new?
Yes.
Microphone number 1.
Just a quick question. What happens?
Your name and address one more time for us.
Sherry Fletcher, 102 Prairie.
Ms. Fletcher.
What happens if we don't vote this $300,000 and what happens?
They will proceed to litigate. They have, they've suspended, their three-year period expired in August of this year and that was, we agreed to hold it in suspension, but they've indicated that they will litigate if the settlement agreement is not approved by the town.
Okay, so that would cost us a lot more money.
We think so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I think we are ready for a vote. With all those in favor of Article 1, please raise their ballots. Thank you very much. All those opposed. Article 1 passes by a near unanimous vote and I do so declare. We will now move on to Article 2, second part of the eminent domain settlement. Do we have, you'll see the motion is on the screen. Mr. Whalen moves that the town take affirmative action on Article 2 as printed in the warrant. And do we have a second? I see that we do. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 2 proposes that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to grant an easement to the W.R. Grace Company and its successors over the land the town owns leading to and from the Grace Company property in the town of Acton. This is the second part of the three-part settlement between the town and W.R. Grace. This map shows the This map shows the land Grace owns in Acton, colored in green. The land the company formerly owned in Concord is shown in brown. The crosshatched areas are the solar panels on the Concord side. The purple line is the proposed emergency access easement, leading from Knox Trail to the WR Grace property in Acton. Primary access to the 130 acres in Acton is via Independence Road, shown as a gray line entering from the left of the green property and terminating in the middle of the green. The settlement agreement between the town and the company provides for, quote, "a non-exclusive perpetual easement over the Concord property for emergency vehicular and pedestrian access to and from the Acton property," end quote. The company would have preferred that the road through Concord provide primary access to the land in Acton, but we felt strongly that a development in Acton should have its primary access on a road through Acton. In the settlement agreement, some conditions have been placed on the development of the emergency access road. The access road is to be not more than 25 feet wide. Construction and maintenance of the road shall be the obligation of the grantee. Non-exclusive use means that the town can use the road if it's necessary. The road will be unpaved unless paving is required by the fire chief, and the grantee will pay the cost of relocating any solar panels. You can see on the map, once again, that the purple line will encroach into the solar array somewhat if and when the emergency access road is developed. Responsibility for relocating the solar panels, if necessary, is the responsibility of the party developing the access road. The grant of easement for emergency access is only part of the settlement agreement, and I recommend your favorable action on Article Two.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. I note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on this article. And we'll now open the floor for comments and questions. If you have a comment or a question, please approach a microphone and state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Microphone number two.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane. What controls the definition of emergency access? Is that written into zoning bylaw or state law? What constrains what WR Grace can call an emergency that we would not agree is also an emergency? Thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
It's my understanding that the definition is understood in land use law, that it's a public safety emergency, so it isn't a corporate emergency or financial emergency. It relates to public safety, so that if the fire or police -- first responders need to access the land in Acton, and perhaps there's a tree down across the primary access road, the company would be able to access its site for emergency purposes through the Acton land.
Microphone number four.
Nancy Brown, 96 Forest Ridge Road.
Ms. Brown.
Speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle, and the League recommends a yes vote on this article.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Hi. Steve Erza, 39 Cottage Street.
Mr. Erza.
I'm impressed with all this good work. However, I'm thinking there's probably a large legal cost to the town. Any idea of what this project has cost, or legal expense from the beginning, or?
It hasn't really -- the -- it hasn't been substantial. Carrie, did you -- oh, there's Mina? You want to cover that, Mina? Thank you. We did most of the negotiations. Alice Kaufman and I were in on the negotiations. We did have council with us, but we led most of the negotiations. It wasn't attorney to attorney, so the cost -- there was some costs associated with it, but it wasn't extraordinary.
Very impressive. Thank you.
And I could give you the number for negotiating the settlement, not the initial demand, was under $15,000.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further persons at microphones, it looks like we're ready for a vote. With all those in favor of Article Two, please raise your ballots. Thank you very much. All those opposed. It looks like a unanimous vote in favor of Article Two, and I do so declare. We'll now proceed to Article Three, the third part of our eminent domain package. And on this one, we'll hear from Ms. Rasmussen. The motion is on the screen. Mr. McCain moves that the town take affirmative action on Article Three as printed in the warrant. Do we have a second for this motion? I see that we do. Ms. Rasmussen.
Good evening. Marsha Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management for the town of Concord. This article proposes an amendment to the zoning bylaw to specifically allow emergency vehicular and pedestrian access over town-owned land to an adjacent property. This is the third component of the settlement agreement between the town and WR Grace. The aerial shows the former WR Grace site with the newly constructed solar array. The proposed bylaw language is a bit of a bell and suspenders approach to providing the easement, but assures WR Grace that the use will be allowed without actually constructing the emergency access at this time. This assurance could not be accomplished through a special permit, site plan approval, or subdivision, because such approval would expire in either two or three years if the emergency access wasn't actually constructed. Here's the entire language of the amendment. The new language is highlighted in yellow, and we don't specifically allow that emergency access and pedestrian access. So I believe Mr. McCain recommends affirmative action.
Thank you. I don't think we're going to hear from the Select Board, but I'd like to note that both the Select Board and the Planning Board recommend affirmative action on Article Three. So we'll now open the floor to questions and comments, and, once again, please approach a microphone and state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Microphone number one.
Tom Lage, 38 Shore Drive.
Mr. Lage.
Just to clarify, is this a general zoning bylaw amendment, or does it apply to just this particular property?
I should note, by the way, thank you for saying zoning bylaw amendment. I should note that this is -- this article does require a two-thirds vote, because it is a zoning bylaw amendment, and -- but I'll let Ms. Rasmussen answer that question.
Yes, it is part of -- will be part of the zoning bylaw.
So that means it will apply to any piece of property, not just this one?
If there were other groups that wish to propose emergency access easements or pedestrian path, we don't currently have a noted easement over a piece of land. This is the only location where we do have such an easement, so I think it is only applicable to this particular piece of land.
I mean, do we foresee it being applicable to any other pieces of land?
Not unless the town creates those easements, and that we'd have to come to this body to have that approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number four.
Once again, Nancy Brown, 96 Forest Ridge Road.
Ms. Brown.
Speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle, the League recommends a yes vote on this article.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks like we're ready for a vote on Article Three. All those in favor, please raise your ballots. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your ballots. I see that that carries by a unanimous vote. I'm sorry, not unanimous. Near unanimous, and therefore well over two-thirds, and I do so declare. We will now proceed to Article Four, and the motion for Article Four is on the screen. Ms. Kaufman moves that the town take affirmative action on Article Four as printed in the warrant. Do we have a second for the motion under Article Four? I see that we do. Thank you. And we will hear from Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Four requests that the town authorize the Select Board to accept a gift of land from the White Pond Associates. The Select Board may act alone to accept a gift of funds, but accepting a gift of real estate requires a two-thirds vote of Town Meeting. The Select Board and I were surprised and excited in late May of this year, when Representatives of the White Pond Association contacted us for the first time to discuss this incredible gift. Cardholders at the private beach have enjoyed swimming at this location since 1932. The gift from the White Pond Associates, or shortly WPA, includes a total of 1.814 acres. The WPA have been excellent stewards of this open space for more than 85 years. Shown here is the map that was included in your warrant under this article. The 18 acres are located between White Pond and Powder Mill Road to the east, and with Plainfield Road to the north. Access to the beach and parking are via an old county road now maintained by the Commonwealth to ensure the access to the pond is open for fishing by any resident of the state, because White Pond is recognized by the state as a great pond. Note that the parcels are labeled C1 at the top, parcel X along the water, B1 is also along the water, and parcel A1 is at the bottom. Two parcels will be deeded to the Natural Resources Commission to be held as conservation land. The two waterfront properties will have use restrictions, allowing swimming and passive recreation, but no additional development or other uses. Here's the map again. All of the parcels will be subject to a conservation restriction to be held and enforceable by a yet-to-be-named third party. Swimming uses will be allowed on parcel X and B1, but no other development will be permitted. It includes some improvements in equipment, including a 65-car parking lot, a lengthy concrete staircase leading from the upper lot down to the beach, a lower parking area for staff and disabled visitors, bathroom facilities, staff office, a drilled water supply, a swimming raft, lifeguard chairs, and other equipment. Here's a photo of the upper parking lot. These are the stairs that lead down to the beach, and here are the lavatory facilities. This extraordinary gift from the White Pond Associates includes a planned gift of funds remaining in their bank account upon the completion of the gifting process. It's expected that the funds remaining will be about $300,000. These funds will be restricted -- will be restricted and may only be used for capital improvements consistent with an approved master plan for the property. As a recreational facility, some of the needed improvements at White Pond may be eligible for Community Preservation Act funding. A portion of the WPA funds will be reserved for at least a year or two, to be sure that all financial obligations of the association have been met. There aren't a lot of physical improvements that come with this property, but those that do exist will need some reconstruction in the coming years. The Assistant Town Manager Kate Hodges has applied for state grant in the amount of $118,000 to improve and expand the handicap parking and drop-off area at the waterfront. The grant would also provide a paved, gently sloping walkway from the upper parking lot to make it easier for those with disabilities to negotiate the 50-foot change in gradient down to the beach. Eventually, the restrooms will have to be replaced, and the septic system move further away from the pond. The staff room and first aid station should be upgraded when the restrooms are replaced. The parking lot is in adequate condition, but the access road and driveway leading to the parking lot will need some work, and we should explore replacing the on-site well with a connection to the water system. There's a preliminary -- this is a preliminary concept plan showing some of the improvements on the property. The areas shown in yellow are the accessibility improvements we hope to make with state grant funds. This slide shows our estimated cost of capital improvements. Again, the accessibility improvements, the restroom and septic system is probably the most significant cost. Improving the access road, keeping the drainage out of the pond is important, possibly connecting to the water system, and at some point in future years, resurfacing the parking lot. So the total capital improvements over the next several years is about $1.5 million. There is $300,000 available from the White Pond Associates that may only be used for capital improvements. That reduces the number somewhat, and we believe there are state grants available. And the state has offered to resurface that county road, which could relieve us of the $335,000 if the town agrees to take over permanent maintenance of the road, which they do not want to continue doing. The operating budget, we have not finalized a plan for approaching public use and membership at the beach. The White Pond Associates found that by having membership fees and limiting the number of members, the cost of operating the beach can easily be covered by users. However, major capital costs cannot be covered by beach user fees. One of their reasons for wanting to donate the land to the town was a realization that in order to finance the capital improvements that would be required, they would need to sell a portion of the property for development. That was something they really did not want to do. Shown here is one possible budget scenario with conservative estimates of revenue. This includes the sale of some beach passes to nonresidents, including those existing cardholders that have been accustomed to using the beach who currently live out of town. We would limit nonresident passes to 10% of the total, and we charge 35% more for nonresidents. Any resident of Concord would be eligible to purchase a pass. We need some time this winter to solicit public input and determine what the best approach for managing this wonderful resource is. This slide shows our expected operating costs to hire lifeguards, maintenance staff, purchasing services, cleaning, and for equipment purchases. We are projecting conservatively that it might take three years to find the right balance between the beach sticker sales and other income and our operating costs. The goal is to make swimming at White Pond something that's affordable for all Concord families. We recognize that there will be peak days of peak demand, when some users will have to be turned away, but with 90% or more of the users coming from Concord, we don't expect the situation to be similar to Walden Pond, which is open to all state residents. We are being conservative in estimating, projecting revenue for the next few years. We hope to fine-tune the expenses and balance offset the revenue to make it self-sufficient for everything except capital investments within two or three years. Two years ago, Alice Kaufman and I approached the White Pond Association Board to request that they grant five or 10 daily passes for Concord residents to provide some access to the beach to the public. We were concerned that the town was spending public funds to hire park rangers to keep people from swimming in Seachem's Cove, police officers to do parking enforcement, and Community Preservation Act funds were used to eliminate erosion around the pond to maintain water quality, but there was no place for the general public to swim at the pond. Those discussions helped the WPA Board decide that it would make sense to provide an excellent public swimming area at White Pond through this extraordinary gift. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I urge your support for Article Four.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. We will hear from Ms. Kaufman of the Select Board, and I want to note that the Finance Committee, the White Pond Advisory Committee, and the Recreation Commission all recommend affirmative action on Article Four.
I'm Alice Kaufman, 1615 Lowell Road, member of the Select Board and speaking on the Board's behalf.
Ms. Kaufman.
Madam Moderator. So I asked for just a couple of minutes to speak to this article this evening, to publicly thank the White Pond Associates for their incredible generosity in gifting their land to the town. I've come before Town Meeting on behalf of White Pond in the past, but I am ecstatic to be here tonight to say thank you. The Select Board wholeheartedly and unanimously recommends affirmative action on Article One. I've been the liaison to the White Pond Advisory Committee for the past six years. During that time, the town has undertaken scientific studies of water quality in the pond, secured funds for bank stabilization on badly eroded town-owned trails, improved the trails that traverse the town property, and hired rangers to help with people management on the trails and in the neighborhood. The White Pond Advisory Committee actively participates in a volunteer-led water quality monitoring program, something it has done under the volunteer direction of Dr. Bill Walker for decades. In 2015, the White Pond Advisory Committee prepared a vision document for White Pond, and the next year prepared a State of the Pond report. Together, these documents, which are available on the committee's website, on the town's website under the committee tab, and they were accepted by the Select Board, serve as vision and management guides for the future of White Pond. White Pond is a great pond of the Commonwealth, is a treasured resource in our town, and we're looking forward to working with and learning from the experiences of the White Pond Associates to ensure quality program of a public beach -- quality programming of a public beach beginning next summer. Again, the Select Board unanimously recommends affirmative action on this article with a lot of thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll now open the floor to questions and comments. Microphone number two.
I'm Alan Beveridge, 28 Shore Drive.
Mr. Beveridge.
I have a proposed amendment to this article, which I submitted earlier, and I found out I'm not sufficiently knowledgeable about the town traditions and procedures, and it slightly exceeds 100 words. I'm told that somebody from the town was going to transcribe it and throw it up on the screen, which would satisfy that requirement, so if possible.
It looks like we have Mr. Beveridge's motion to amend on the screen. Do we have a second for Mr. Beveridge's motion to amend? I see that we do. Mr. Beveridge?
Should I read it?
Proceed. You may speak on your motion, and go ahead and read it for us.
Okay, this is to add the following language after that, which is in the proposed article. That any restriction limiting any portion of the use of the White Pond property for a public bathing beach shall restrict such use to residents of the town of Concord, and that measure shall be put in place to assure that this restriction is observed. The town may -- The town may, at its discretion and with appropriate restrictions, allow use of such public bathing beach by any members of the White Pond Association, White Pond Associates Inc., who are members as of the date of the passage of this article and who are not currently residents of the town. The town will put in place measures to protect residential neighbors of the White Pond property and the White Pond neighborhoods from any potential deleterious effects of public use, including trespass, violation of privacy rights, and any other similar breaches. These restrictions and conditions shall not limit any other terms, conditions, or restrictions that may be determined to be warranted by the Select Board."
Mr. Beveridge, why don't you take just a minute and a half and explain to us why you're making this motion to amend the article?
Okay. Let me just preface it by saying if I had seen the presentation that Mr. Whalen just gave at the September 12th public hearing, I might have worded this slightly differently. But the main difference, made substantive difference of this, is limiting it to town residents. And I feel that there is currently a fair amount of pressure on the resources of White Pond, not just by residents but by nonresidents, and once the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is in, that will increase. There's also, I don't know how many people know about this, there is an article in the Sudbury warrant coming up for a vote on October 15th, I believe, to develop what's called the gravel quarry off Route 117, which I've never seen gravel there that wasn't trucked in. It's really a sand quarry. But one of their proposals, which it's a guess, but I believe will pass, is that the Quarry North proposal in Sudbury, which will put 333 units of affordable market rate and age-restricted housing in what is the sand quarry, which is just literally a stone's throw from White Pond.
Just if you could kind of come back to the amendment and try and wrap it up.
That will put additional pressure. I mean, there's going to be a lot of pressure by non-Concord residents, regardless of what the legal restrictions are, as there always have been. My wife and I have lived there for 25 years, so I would like to see this restricted to town residents.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, procedurally, what we will now do is the meeting will turn its attention to this amendment, and anyone who wishes to speak on the amendment, but not on the article itself, just on whether to amend the article in the way that Mr. Beveridge proposes and is on the screen, is welcome to approach the microphone. And before we do that, I'm going to ask Mr. Whalen if there is a response that he would like to briefly make.
Madam Chair, I know this question came up before tonight's presentation. We asked the town council to opine on the legality of such a motion, so I think it might be in order to have Mina share his thoughts.
Why don't we have town council just briefly give us his thoughts on what the context would be for us as a matter of law were we to adopt this amendment?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So we believe the town could restrict parking to just residents. We also believe the town could charge differential rates between residents and nonresidents, as was presented before, and could make a certain allotment of passes available to residents first. However, to prohibit nonresidents altogether raises a few issues of concern that I think are important for town meeting to consider. First, White Pond is a great pond of the Commonwealth, meaning it's more than 10 acres in size. Under Chapter 131, Section 45, access to the pond for hunting, fishing, and boating is required for all inhabitants. While the statute doesn't mention swimming, there are several cases from the late 1800s and early 1900s that have interpreted that right to access to include swimming, and the Mass DEP takes a position that swimming is a public right for all inhabitants in great ponds. So that's one issue that could lead to a challenge from someone outside the town. That being said, we recognize that a lot of towns do limit access to juster residents for municipally-owned lakes and ponds, including great ponds. So it has been done, but it is something that is controversial and potentially challengeable. However, what's perhaps a bigger issue and what I think should be a concern for town meeting is that adding the restriction to this town meeting vote could hamper the town's ability to close the deal with the donor and to operate White Pond going forward. The donor may not be interested in donating the pond with that condition. As you heard, there are out-of-town members now of the White Pond Association, so having that restriction and limiting it to only current members may be an issue for the donor. I don't think this has been vetted with them as a negotiation issue. Second, it's my understanding that the town will seek grant funding from the state for some of the capital improvements that Mr. Whalen mentioned earlier. That grant funding, in some cases, may be contingent on opening the pond to residents and nonresidents, which is certainly not surprising, given the Mass DEP's position regarding public access for swimming at great ponds. So our recommendation would be to not have a restriction. If the town feels strongly about having one, that could be negotiated in the terms of the sale. A restriction could be placed later, but to have town meeting today require that a restriction occur would place the Select Board in a position of having to get the donor to agree to that and perhaps jeopardize grant funding unless a restriction was removed later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macarius, and we will now open the floor at 1:00. Mr. Beveridge, microphone number two.
No, I just wanted to ask. I specifically put in their language saying that the current members of the White Pond Association could continue to use it. I don't think, based on what I've heard, that there will be future members, so I don't know how the White Pond Association could object to this. Is there something I'm missing?
I can, Madam Moderator, just to clarify that. It's my understanding that the White Pond Association, Mr. Whalen can correct me if I'm wrong, has asked that it would be open to residents and nonresidents, but... Sorry, so it's current cardholders. So that issue, you're correct, Mr. Beveridge. As long as the current holders, that may not be an issue for the donor. It still would be for the grant funding.
Well, then, I still think it should be passed, because I know there are other towns that restrict, that have town beaches that are restricted to members of the town, and I think we should do the same thing because of all the pressures that are coming to White Pond.
Okay. Thank you very much. The floor is now open to others who wish to question or comment. Microphone number four.
Gregor McGregor, 70 Williams Road. Madam Moderator.
Mr. McGregor.
In weighing this amendment, which is before us, I thought I would look carefully at what the proposal is in the main motion regarding 10%. May I ask the proponents of the town, what is the 10% a percent of for the membership that's available to out-of-towners? Is it 10% of a total number? Is it 10% of the then Concord members?
Mr. Whalen, Ms. Hodges.
And is it up to 10%? A related question is, is this a term of settlement? That is, a settlement contract? Or is this a term of the gift that would be given? Those are different, since the town will be burdened in perpetuity by the terms and conditions of the gift itself.
Mr. Whalen?
And I don't believe that any nonresidential participation is addressed in the gift terms. So this is something that town officials have suggested as a possibility, not something that's required by the donor. And let me have the Assistant Town Manager Kate Hodges answer where the 10% came from.
Hi, Kate Hodges, Assistant Town Manager. The 10% was a recommendation made by my office and the Recreation Department. It's based on what is called carrying capacity, which is the maximum level for visitor use of an area can accommodate without severely detracting from its access or its safety. So for public, non-ocean bathing beaches, the World Recreation and Tourism states that the figure is necessary for the physical, economic, and socioeconomic status of whatever the environmental thing is. So some of them are parks, and some of it is, in this case, ponds. So it's a little bit complicated, but it's basically dictated by what's called hectares. And for reference, one acre is .405 hectares, or one hectare is 2.47 acres. So for the amount of beachfront and waiting area, we're talking about around 21,000 square feet, so it's about 400 people, give or take. I'm happy to share the math with you by email if that's easier.
So I see this as a proposed policy, not a term of the gift.
Correct.
And it would allow the town flexibility, should it need additional revenue in case there's a shortfall in town members?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Ara Avakian, 501 Powder Mill Road.
Mr. Avakian.
Thank you. I am all in favor of doing whatever we can to protect White Pond, but I must say I'm confused by this amendment because I don't see how it does that. Let me explain. I've been a resident of the White Pond neighborhood for 42 years. I spent over nine years in the White Pond Advisory Board, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. The reason I don't understand this article is the current way the White Pond Associates' beaches run would presumably be similar once the town takes over. That is, permits are given, permits are bought, and then people come to the beach, and if there are too many people there, they get turned away. They're not allowed to park unless they have these permits. The pressures that Mr. Beveridge mentioned, and which I am very concerned about, aren't from the people who legally use that beach. They come from all around the pond, and the protection that the pond needs involves patrolling the pond, making sure that people who come to the pond and swim do so only legally at the beach. So by restricting the members in the future to just town residents doesn't restrict the total number of people using the pond and doesn't do anything about protecting the pond from unauthorized swimming. So I have to admit, I'm not in favor of this amendment because I don't understand how it protects the pond. If Mr. Beveridge wants to explain further, fine, but currently, I'm not in favor of this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Avakian. Microphone number one, and I'll just remind everyone that we're talking only about the amendment at this point.
I had a question.
Your name and address, please.
Eleanor Goud, 31 Brigham Woods.
Yes, go.
If we, if Concord accepts state money, and perhaps was it federal money, but state money anyway, would that change the rules of the gift? That it would be like Walden Pond, that anybody could come?
Mr. Whalen?
I don't believe the acceptance of state, the White Pond Associates, I don't believe are placing any restrictions on membership or source of funds to make capital improvements and that sort of thing. But if we were to apply for a state grant, if this amendment is adopted, we would not be able to apply for most state grants that would require some non-Concord residents to be able to utilize the facility. So that financial opportunity would be denied to us.
Okay. Seeing, microphone number two.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane.
Ms. Felsham.
I wonder if town council would opine to the legal meaning of the word "residence." Would it mean that a resident cannot bring their out-of-town visitors? Would it mean that a non-custodial parent could not bring their children who are visiting them or staying with them for the entire summer? I am curious, and I would also like to comment that the rushed procedure of special town meeting brings up exactly this sort of too-quick amendment, and I don't see the reason for bringing this otherwise absolutely wonderful article to special town meeting. What's the hurry? It leaves us open to these sorts of odd last-minute things because we have not gone through the standard process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Macarius?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The definition of resident has a lot of case law on it, so I won't belabor this, but suffice it to say that the issue would be how the town chooses to enforce that. So if it was requiring a pass be used to come to the pond, that's how it would have to enforce who can get in or not. It would have to make distinctions about whether a guest of a resident is allowed. It would then have to make distinctions about relatives, some of the other categories that were mentioned. So it is another complication of this. Typically, a resident is based on the intent of the person to reside in a place, which is a multi-factor test, but it's the same test used for schools and other factors. So there's ways to do it, but it would require the town to figure out the enforcement mechanism.
Thank you. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks to me like we're ready for a vote on the amendment. Now, we're not voting on the article here. We're voting on Mr. Beveridge's amendment, proposed amendment to Article Four, which we see on the screen. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your ballots. All those opposed, please raise your ballots. We see that the motion fails by a large preponderance, and we will now return our discussion to the main motion, which will get back up on the screen here, but it is, in any event, taking affirmative action on Article Four as printed in the warrant. If anyone has, microphone four.
Hi, Sarah Weiner, 20 Bow Street.
Proceed.
I have two questions. One, is there any reason to think that if the town takes control of this property, that the dock will continue to be maintained, will not continue to be maintained in the swimming area? And my other question is, is it necessary?
Can you get a little bit closer to your microphone and do that one more time?
My first question was, is there any reason to think that if the town takes control of this land, that it will not continue to maintain the dock in the swimming area? And my second question is, is it really necessary for the NRC to take control of any of this land, and why are they being given a proportion of this land? Thank you.
Mr. Whalen?
Madam Chair, it's my understanding we are enthusiastically planning to continue having the wharf, I think we might call it, set off from the shore for diving, so that's part of the gift, and we intend to maintain it and keep it in place in future years. Relatively, the NRC, that is the wishes of the donor. That is a condition of the gift, is that the land would go to the Natural Resources Commission and that there be a conservation restriction in place held by a third party that would make it enforceable, so that the prohibitions on development and certain types of uses would be enforceable by a third party. That is the donor's wishes.
Thank you.
Microphone number three.
Yes, I'm Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road.
Yes, proceed.
Yeah, my question has to, is related to the last one in terms of the split responsibility and in terms of the proposed uses of the land that is not for swimming. Does open space include haying? If so, who would the party be that does the haying, including any seeding? Does the Natural Resources Commission have different rules for how the agricultural use of that land would be continued as opposed to the portion that the town would have? And could farm vehicles be allowed to traverse back and forth? I mean, I've lived in Concord for 30 years, and 30 years ago it was used for haying, the 15 acres of it, and I don't even, I don't know what the current use is, but we should be, I think before we vote, we should know what conservation means as opposed to open space and how it plans to be used. Thank you.
Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The donor has prepared a draft conservation restriction that is currently under negotiation with the Natural Resources Commission, and the, let me see here, the proposal is that the parcels, I have the map, Heather, with parcels A1, and the proposal is that C1 and A1 that are currently farmed, as is a portion of B1, that those lands would be for non-agricultural uses. The donor has concerns that agricultural uses may be in conflict with the water quality of the pond, and that fertilizer, pesticides, and other materials used during agriculture may contribute to the algal blooms and other problems with water quality. The NRC, I know, or at least Adelia Kay, doesn't feel that strongly about that, and I think there's some discussion about whether that position of non-agriculture on those parcels, A1 and C1, could be moderated a little bit. So I must represent at this time that the donor's intention is that the agriculture no longer continue on this property. continue on this property.
Microphone number two.
Nancy Cronin, 216 Garfield Road.
Ms. Cronin?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle. And our recommendation in this case is that this issue, because of the time that it has come up so quickly, and there is so much that we need to understand about it before we take on a major responsibility to the town, we would recommend that it be postponed until the spring town meeting. And that would allow much more time for the public to be able to think about it, and ask their questions, and get them answered ahead of time.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin. Microphone number one.
Lori Gilbizaras, 1376 Old Marlborough Road.
Ms. Gilbizaras.
Ms. Moderator. I think this is a generous gift, and one that the town should definitely take advantage of. It offers conservation land in a part of our community that, to my knowledge, does not have significant amounts of conservation land. From that perspective alone, it is worth adding this. I think also, there are many questions remaining, which the League did bring up. And part of that is the algal blooms in White's Pond. So owning this land, or having the town own the land as conservation land is one thing, and certainly will go toward protecting the water, which we need to do. But there's the unknown costs of taking care of the algal blooms, if, in fact, we can take care of that. And I've heard varying reports that it may be very difficult to restore the pond itself. So I think this requires a lot of contingency thinking. I have a number of questions, and one of them is, what is the total amount of acreage that will be devoted to conservation versus to restoration and whatnot?
Do you have any other questions? Why don't you just give us, if you've got a couple more, just give them to us.
What will happen to that land if the town does not accept the gift? And can the town delay the upgrades? So we're not talking about a major investment at this point, but we have some time to sit back, look at the land, answer the questions, and then make a decision on how and when to develop it. I think one of the Article 23, the Community of Resilience article passed last year at town meeting, and a big part of that is low-impact development.
Okay. You're out of time. We'll have answers to your questions. Mr. Whalen?
Madam Moderator, let me just comment on the rush to bring this before town meeting. We were aware in April, when we were negotiating with WR Grace, that we were going to have a special town meeting around, in August, because we knew that WR Grace settlement was coming. And as it turned out, it was scheduled for, the parties agreed that it would be held sometime during the month of October. It was in June into July that we were having conversations with the White Pond Association for the first time. The Association expressed a desire to complete this gifting process by the end of this calendar year in the hope that the town would know, if it was accepted by the town, the town would know and have time to plan for next beach season, have the opportunity to hire lifeguards and so forth. And if the town was not interested, then the White Pond Associations would know that, and they themselves could plan. They're volunteers. It's a lot of effort to hire lifeguards and to keep them through the summer, and there's a lot of work that goes into it for a volunteer board. And so they were looking for a decision by the town around January 1 of this year, so that they would know whether or not they were operating or not. So that was, that factored into our conversation about including this on the special town meeting warrant. The acres involved, I don't know the exact acreage, but Parcel X and Parcel B1 are different, only in that swimming uses are permitted on those two parcels. C1 and A1 are conservation, non-agricultural conservation utland. It's otherwise the same as other conservation, except for the agricultural component. And what happens if this is not accepted, I don't know. It's my sense that the corporation, the library, the White Pond Associates are concerned about the need to improve the facilities, did not want to contemplate selling some of this land for housing development. That may be their only decision.
And, yeah, you're out of time. I'm sorry. The third question was whether or not we might delay the upgrades.
And I think that the facilities have been as they are for some time. I think it would be possible to delay some of the investment. The bathrooms are in tough shape, so the sooner the better, I think, on that. Some of the parking lot and some of the roadway improvements, I think, could be deferred. So it doesn't all have to be done right away, and that's a community decision. We would bring forward to the town a proposal to fund it. If the town thought the timing was right, maybe it would move forward.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Madam Moderator, one question was not answered.
No, no, no. So could you turn off microphone number one, please? You're out of time. Microphone number two. Thank you.
Regina Ryder, 96 The Valley Road. Madam Moderator.
Proceed.
The first question is already answered, so White Pond Association came to you in June or July. The second thing is that in town meeting, we already approved the purchase of the land at Warner Pond with this idea of creating a town beach there. So now we have White Pond and want to maintain the beach there. So what will happen to the one at Warner Pond? Will we have costs for both properties? What will we do with the one and with the other one? And wouldn't it make more sense to delay the decision and wait for town meeting, so that people would have more time to really look into it and decide then? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
Madam Moderator, let me just, Mr. McCain and I had our first meeting with the White Pond Associates in late May was the first meeting we had to discuss that, and the full board was informed in early June. So, and at that time, the Gerro, the decision by town meeting to purchase the Gerro property had been made, and that deal concluded in July. It's true that we proposed some significant improvements on the Gerro land. It's about seven acres on the north shore of Warner's Pond. Our hope was certainly to get fishing, some boating activities, maybe sailing, kayaking, that type of activity. It's walking distance from West Concord Center, so that was attractive, and there's existing hiking trails, and it's adjacent to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. So for a lot of reasons, it was worth purchasing that, and that was a priority project where other parcels of land were passed over in favor of this Gerro property. We did mention the goal would be, in the distant future, to develop a bathing beach in that location. It's a shallow pond. There's a 30-inch pipe that drains from Route 2 directly into the pond, so some significant, we've already contacted the state to see if it would be possible for them to have detention basins that you've seen developed on Route 128 and other locations. The state is detaining that stormwater runoff before it gets into water bodies, but that work has to be done. So we were thinking sometime well down the road that there would be bathing at Warner's Pond. So this wonderful gift makes public bathing beach available next year.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Jeff Adams, 142 Farmers Cliff Road. I'm a member of the Natural Resources Commission and speaking for the NRC.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The NRC is enthusiastic about accepting Lot A1 and Lot C1 at White Pond for conservation purposes, and encourages passage of this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Ellie Garvey, 25 Damon Street.
Ms. Garvey.
I had a whole bunch of questions, but they were actually answered by Mr. Whalen's excellent presentation about the usage proposal. I support this. I've been a member of the White Pond Association for a while. It is a beautiful spot, and I think we're lucky to get it. As my grandmother would say, two things, don't look a gift horse in the mouse, and be gracious, and say thank you when somebody gives you a gift. So I say thank you to the White Pond people, and for getting Warner's Pond and White's Pond. Two beaches are better than one, and I say, let's go for it, and say thank you, and accept it.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Bob Tritman, 43 Middle Street.
Mr. Tritman.
I was wondering how the proposed number passes that you're projecting compares to what's currently issued by the White Pond Associates.
Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Madam Moderator, there are two models.
Whatever.
Two models for operating a public bathing beach. The coastal model is that any resident of the town could buy a parking sticker at a very low price, but on hot days, you might have to wait in line to get into the parking lot. The White Pond Beach model has been to sell between 400 and 500 cardholders, memberships, they call them cardholders, at a more elevated price, I think it was in the neighborhood of $300. And that by selling 400 to 500 at that level, you can definitely generate enough revenue to pay for the lifeguards and clean the bathrooms and that sort of thing. So we are trying to, we will plan this winter to get some public feedback on what's the best approach. We'd really like to make the beach available to everyone, so what's the best approach to take there? If we cut it off at only 400 families, and there's about 7,000 families, I think, in town, it'd be unfortunate to do that. So we need more dialogue on how to approach it. I hope that's responsive.
Thank you. Microphone number one. That's you, sir.
Stephen Schloss, 86 Hillside Avenue.
Mr. Schloss.
My concern is just, and it wasn't clear to me how many day passes we would be giving, or whether that was going to be limited. I have two concerns about that. One is the Walden Pond issue, which, as most of us know, Walden Pond parking lot gets closed on most weekends and most nice weekdays, and I would just be concerned that White Pond become an overflow for the people who can't get into Walden Pond, such that when Concord residents and cardholders come by, the pond is closed to them in the afternoon. Secondly, the way the pond has been running is it's not filled all the time, and it's, with the lower water level closures for algae the last several years, increased water temperature, we really don't know that if we have a full, absolutely full beach every single day of the summer, whether we might be promoting increased number of pond closures during the summer. So my question is, in your budget, you talked about day passes. Was that going to be unlimited and first-come, first-served, or was there going to be some limitation to that?
My intention in presenting it was that those would be Concord residents coming in for the day, not people coming in from wherever. And they would be limited in number. And as Kate mentioned, we know that there's a carrying capacity of the beach. We do have professional consultants and advisors, ESS, on the water quality of the pond. So we hope to work with the White Pond Advisory Committee and the Natural Resources Commission and others, and the Rec Commission, to decide what's the best approach to this. The White Pond Associates indicated that they were already having some trouble with, people went on hot days, when everybody wanted to go, cars would park at the Willard School or elsewhere, and they'd be walking in from all different locations, and it would get pretty crowded. So we recognize that happens at other beaches as well. We'll have to deal with the walk-in traffic, or people biking in from the rail trail. We do expect to maintain our enforcement elsewhere around the pond, so swimming is only at the beach, and then we'll try to maintain how many people can get to the beach, and people have to wait their turn on those hot days.
So we're able to limit the day passes to local residents?
Exactly.
Is that legally acceptable?
We've heard the comment a lot comparing what would be this public bathing beach to that of Walden, but Walden is a state beach, and so the Department of Conservation and Recreation has several different rules and regulations that they have to abide by, and it's different than what the municipalities can do. So what I can say is, the information that I've given so far to the town manager and the Recreation Commission, and what we've discussed, are really just ideas that we would then present probably at least to, if not more than that, meetings, public forums, where we would try to understand what the community wants. We're trying to develop a price point that people think is fair. When I've thrown it out to a few people, they've said, that's too low. I haven't had anyone say it's too high, which is interesting. So we want to make sure that it's at a price point that people can handle. And then regarding the day passes, I suppose that has to be a public dialogue. The thought of having a day pass would be that you would have that for somebody who might be visiting, so it wouldn't just be someone from, you know, far away that is just coming and passing through, but it might be if you have a house guest or something for a couple of weeks, and you're at work, but the house guest is home, that they can use your pass, but recognizing that they're not in your residence. But again, all of this is really up for discussion. Does that answer the question?
Okay. I want to point out that we have been at this article for 45 minutes now, and we do have, I see lots of people still up, and if you have new questions and new comments, please stay at the microphone and share them. If you're reiterating, you might consider that we have seven more articles to get through this evening. Microphone number two.
Terry Ackerman, 89 Heathbridge Road.
Ms. Ackerman.
Quick question. This is an exciting proposal, and I'm just wondering if you've had time to investigate any type of liability that might come on the town from either the algae bloom, or in the case of maybe accidental drowning, or any other problems, insurance premiums, and other costs that the town would take on.
Okay, let's hold that for just a minute and see if we have another question. Microphone number four. Do you have a question?
I have a question, yes. Jim Ricker, 68 Shore Drive.
Yes, sir.
I've lived in my house on the pond for 43 years, and I've been swimming there since 1950, a very young age, I should mention. I think this is a fantastic gift. I think we're crazy not to take it, but there's one thing I heard during the presentation that troubles me. The algae blooms have been a problem for the last few years. One year, it was substantial closings. Last year, we had maybe interruption for a day. That has had a big impact in the past on, I guess, the revenues of the beach. One of the main contributors to these cyanobacteria blooms is agricultural runoff. I'm not saying it's the cause here, but it's one of several factors. Private owners, we have to be extremely careful about how we treat our own property. I have a two-car parking space up by the road, over 100 feet from the pond. I cannot pave that because it might create runoff, and it's a condition of our original permit. I would be more comfortable if we approved this using the conservation restrictions that the White Pond Association has put in place, and not leave it a loose end that our Department of Natural Resources is considering whether or not they will support agricultural use. It just seems to be inconsistent with what we're trying to accomplish. And I don't know whether that requires an amendment, or if it's a concern to others, but it is to me.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Kelly Roberts, 80 Stone Root Lane.
Ms. Roberts.
I would like to express my gratitude to the White Pond Associates, not only for this gift of a little slice of paradise, but for the years of programming and the wonderful waterfront staff that they provided. My children learned to swim at White Pond, and it's a fabulous gift. I did learn tonight about one of the contingencies of the gift, and I'm wondering if there are any other contingencies that we may not know about.
Okay.
I also do have concern about a paved path down to the pond. If there's handicap parking below, I don't understand the need for a paved path because runoff is a major problem, and a paved path going down that hill would exacerbate the runoff.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll take one.
Madam Moderator?
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Hodges.
I just wanted to say that it isn't paved. The path that's going down is made with decking and non-porous pavers, so it's part of our sustainable initiative.
Okay. And Mr. Whalen, do you want to take the other questions about liability, and whether there are any other contingencies that we don't know about? Or, Ms. Hodges?
I have the unique and wonderful distinction of doing the insurance for the town, so regarding liability, yes, there'll be a raise in our insurance premium. It's relatively negligible, and that is because we are going to be going through getting it certified as a public bathing beach, which means, number one, that we have the carrying capacity graded and rated and certified with the state, that we're doing weekly water tests and publicizing those, that we do water quality reports once every five years.
those, that we do water quality reports once every five years, and that we submit reports that are similar to the Rangers from the lifeguards, that we have available, and up-to-date flotation devices and rescue equipment, and other things like that. So we have it between $1,500 to $2,000, which is fairly reasonable for that. As far as accidental drowning, we're covered under the recreational statute, so there are many things that could happen when people are recreating in various capacities. And so the legislature has $100,000 cap on that for payouts unless it's an act of negligence, which we don't anticipate. And the algae bloom, we have the option of purchasing a separate type of insurance that's a loss of business or delay of revenue. So for example, if we had an algae bloom that had us shut down for the majority of the season, and therefore we had made financial commitments to staff or otherwise that we couldn't cover, we'd be able to put in a claim for that.
Thank you. Any other contingencies that we don't know about?
The contingencies are contained in the proposed conservation restriction. So I mentioned the agricultural restriction. That is a wish of the donor that there be non-agricultural, so that doesn't need to be voted by town meeting. I think there's a proposal that it not grow up into forest, and that it be mowed at least once a year, so that it remains open and not wooded, but mowed only once a year is one of the requirements. There are a few requirements like that.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Maria Piaszeki, 28 Shore Drive.
Yes, please proceed.
I just wanted to verify the number of people that will be using the beach, and at one point I heard 400 people, then I heard 400 families. And recently, you put the numbers up of who would be residents, non-residents, it looked like 300, and it looked like you meant by estimate numbers actually actual people, it's a count of people, and that the intent, I just want to verify that the intent is that the existing density that's there of people will be matching what's proposed. At one point, you were talking about number of hectares, going to number of acres, and the count of number of people to hectares to everything else. And anyway, so I just want to verify that it was the same count.
Sure.
Ms. Hodges?
It's not the same count. What I was talking about with the 400 is the carrying capacity, so that's the number of persons that we could have actively recreating in that square footage at the same time. As far as the number of passes, we haven't, the 300 number was what I gave to the town manager as a conservative estimate for what we could do as far as raising revenue to offset the costs of operations. That in no way is reflective of the, you know, number that we could do, more or less. I think that that's going to have to be a community decision, something that we're discussing, and also something that we're able to revisit at least in the first five years every year, because what we don't want to do is limit it, you know, so that many people don't get to benefit from it, but in the same respect, we don't want to give out too many and then be turning people away every day. So we'll have to find the balance. So we would be using the White Pond Association numbers from the last few years to kind of gauge what their general daily and weekend use was, and try to go from there.
Okay, microphone number four.
Yes, hello. Todd Benjamin, a member of the Concord Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Funding Committee, speaking on behalf of myself.
Mr. Benjamin.
I have two questions. In the revenue projections, I'm curious to know if there has been a sensitivity analysis done for the potential decrease in revenues due to the algae blooms that we've seen over the past couple of years. The second question pertains to the cost of this gift. It was stated that there's about $1.575 million of capital expenditures that would be needed, plus a loss of revenue of $50,000 per year. When we look at that in conjunction with the Giraud property, with the acquisition cost of $2 million, and in addition to the projected dredging cost of $2 million to have 20% of the Giraud land available for aquatics, we're up to close to $6 million for two bathing beaches. That does not include infrastructure at Giraud, that does not include recreational pavilions at Giraud, so the cost of having two bathing beaches rapidly approaches $7, $8 million, and I'm wondering how we will afford that.
Mr. Whalen?
So we have not done the sensitivity analysis on the revenue, projected revenue, should there be an algal bloom that shuts the beach down for an extended period of time. And then it is, because this gift is under consideration, it causes us to rethink the planned investment of millions of dollars in creating a bathing beach at the Giraud property. It's something that we'd have to look very carefully at. Again, it's a shallow pond, there's warm water discharges into the pond from Route 2, and it seems like we might not consider moving forward with a beach, certainly not right away, on the Giraud property with this opportunity here.
Okay, we're closing in on an hour here. Microphone number one.
Carmen Jacquet, 38 Shore Drive, Chair, White Pond Advisory Committee.
Yes, thank you.
Our committee is greatly in favor of accepting this gift of land. It really needs the power and strength of the town behind it to take care of the problems and things that can come up, and to keep it in good order. I also, for the past four years, have been participating, as has White Pond, in the EPA Cyanobacteria Monitoring Program. The main cause of algae bloom is overload of phosphorus. It's out of balance with the rest of the nutrients in the water, and the ESS studies show that that comes a lot from runoff. The Sachems cove into the pond, Natural Resources has now the funds, the plans, and the company to take care of that problem. There's going to be new stairs, there's going to be fencing to keep people off land where it's delicate and it gets eroded. There'll be mats done with vegetation can go through it, there'll be plants planted, and that will help a lot with phosphorus runoff. On the other end of the pond, the main source is the boat launch, and White Pond Advisory Committee has tried for years to get something done about the runoff and the undersized drains, and with the town taking it over, we feel that that will happen this time. So we are very much in favor of this really wonderful generous gift. It's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Ara Avakian, 501 Powder Mill Road. I call the question.
Okay, so the question has been called. That is a non-debatable motion. And we'll take that vote now. Do we need a second? Do we have a second? I see that we do. All those in favor of calling the question, I see that passes by, well, actually, all those opposed, okay, that passes by a near majority, and I do so declare, and we will now proceed to a vote on Article Four. All those in favor of Article Four, please raise your ballots. This is a majority vote, thank you. All those opposed, I see that there is a substantial majority in favor of Article Four. That's a vote, and I do so declare. We'll now proceed to Article Five. The motion is on the screen that, well, it's going to be, there we go, that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be expended under the direction of the town manager for the cost of operating a public bathing beach at White Pond, including staffing, equipment materials, and consulting services related to operating a public bathing beach facility, and other costs necessary incidental thereto. Do we have a second for this motion? I see that we do. Mr. Whalen?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Five requests that the town vote to appropriate $30,000 to be used to cover the cost of operating a public bathing beach at White Pond. Here again is the map showing the White Pond Beach. Now that Article Four has been approved, and the Select Board has been authorized to accept the proposed gift of land, the parties will work to complete the gifting process sometime this coming winter. The goal of both parties is for the town to be able to open a beach as a town facility for the summer of 2019, beginning with Memorial Day weekend. We'll need to hire lifeguards before Memorial Day, as well as maintenance staff, seasonal maintenance staff. We'll need to print and sell beach stickers and passes, groom the beach for public use, and clean up the public spaces for the summer season. Here's a possible operating budget with cost of personal services, supplies, et cetera, for a total of $85,000. Projected revenue is at $55,000. That does not include swimming lessons and perhaps concession sales, so there's maybe other opportunities to raise more money. Our financial goal is to have the revenue cover the costs within three years. We think we can do it sooner than that, but we want to be conservative. We also submit a budget request for consideration at the annual town meeting in April, but those funds will not be available until July 1st, so that's the reason for the request tonight. Here are some of the needed capital improvements, which we've already discussed. Those will not be included in the operating budget. Here's the plan that you, the plan that you've seen before, relative to operating new restroom facilities, and lastly, the estimated costs of the improvements, which include a boat washing facility. We hope to, back to the improvements, there you go, have a boat wash facility, something that we want to do right away, because that's also contributing to water quality problems, is a transfer of invasive species from boat to boat as they leave our pond and go to another pond and come here from other places. And we do think improving the restrooms and so forth will be necessary, but those will be community decisions. We'll submit a budget to you, and you'll give that some consideration. Finally, Slide Eight, the photo of the beach, is we believe that the user fees will cover eventually the cost of operating the beach. It's our goal to make the beach available to everyone in the public, but we need to have some startup funds for the first year. We hope that by adding the swimming lessons and perhaps some other revenue opportunities, that we can fully cover our operating costs more quickly, and I recommend your favorable action on Article Five.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. I want to note that the Select Board, and the Finance Committee, and the White Pond Advisory Committee all recommend affirmative action on Article Five. And we'll now open the floor to questions or comments. And once again, come to a microphone, state your name and address. No, you're not coming to a microphone. I don't see anyone in a microphone. Well then, I guess we're ready for a vote on Article Five, and we've been going for a while. Why don't we take this vote standing up, okay? So everyone who's in favor of Article Five, please stand up and hold your ballot up. That's great. Thank you very much. Please be seated. And now, if you are opposed, please stand up and hold your ballot up. Okay, once again, that passes by a near unanimous vote, and I do so declare. And we'll now move on to Article Six. Now, I have no motion on Articles Six and Seven, and accordingly, I will declare that the meeting is taking no action on Articles Six and Seven, and we will proceed to Article Eight. But before we take up Article Eight, we will hear from Concord Carlisle Regional School District Superintendent Dr. Lori Hunter with a brief explanation as to why the Regional School Committee is not moving these articles. Dr. Hunter?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I offer tonight just a brief explanation on behalf of the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee as to the decision not to move forward the articles. We think that's important to provide an explanation. On September 25th, the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee voted unanimously not to move the articles at this upcoming town meeting, as well as a subsequent town meeting in Carlisle. A combination of very recently announced increases in state reimbursement, and a lower-than-projected bid for a feasibility study, provided the school committee with the opportunity to fund the measures addressed in the warrants from the current operating budget, as opposed to asking for supplemental funds at town meeting. The highlights of those increased reimbursements include $100,000 in special education, and just over $22,000 in Metco. The qualified bid, we had put a bid out pending contingent on funding for the feasibility study in Article Seven, came in over $100,000 less than anticipated. While these revenue increases and cost savings don't cover the entire cost of the measures outlined in the warrants, members of the committee and administration believe that we can close the funding gap without seeking supplemental funds from town meeting. That will always be our mission, not to ask for money unless absolutely needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hunter.[1523.63][1523.63](Applause). Okay, so we'll make an exception for that display of emotion, and I did actually forget to give you my lecture on not having any displays of emotion at town meeting. Thank you. Article Eight, we're going to have the motion up on the screen any second. Mr. McCain moves that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be expended under the direction of the town manager for the cost of hiring a professional recruiting firm, and advertising, and other costs associated with recruiting a new town manager. Is there a second for this motion? I see that there is. Mr. McCain?
Tom McCain, 138 Neshatik Road, Select Board Member, and speaking for the Select Board. Madam Chairman, or Madam-
Please proceed.
Moderator. The Select Board unanimously urges affirmative action on Article Eight. In May of this year, Town Manager Chris Whalen announced that this year would be his last as Town Manager after 25 years of service. Article Eight would provide up to $20,000 of funding to allow the town to hire a professional recruiting firm, advertising, and other costs associated with recruiting a new town manager. Given Concord's commitment to a strong Town Manager, open town meeting form of government, the role of Town Manager is critical to the effective and successful management of town finances and operations. We've been extremely fortunate to have had an excellent Town Manager for these past many years, and these funds are necessary to recruit a replacement. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article Eight.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. We'll open the floor for questions and comments. Microphone number two.
Madam Moderator, I'm Stan Black, 17 Edmonds Road.
Mr. Black.
I'm going to vote no on this article in an effort to keep Chris here, who is irreplaceable. Thank you.[1661.63][1661.63](Laughter).
Microphone number one.
Artis Gordman.
Ms. Gordman?
418 Monument Street. I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters in our support for this article.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it appears that we are ready for a vote on Article Eight. All those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your ballots. Thank you very much. All those opposed, I see that carries by a near unanimous vote, and I do so declare. We'll now proceed to Article Nine. We'll have the motion up in a moment. This is the fiscal year 2019 supplemental appropriation for the Police Department, in which Mr. Whalen moves that the town transfer the sum of $48,000 from the Emergency Response Stabilization Fund to be added to the amounts previously appropriated under Number 11 Police Department of Article Seven of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting, said some to be expended under the direction of the town manager. And this is a two-thirds vote required here because we are taking this money out of a stabilization fund. Do we have a second for the motion? I see that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Whalen?
Article Nine requests that the town vote to transfer the sum of $48,000 from the Emergency Response Stabilization Fund to be added to the Police Department budget appropriated under Item 11 of Article Seven from the annual town operating budget. The intent of Article Nine is to create a new police officer position in the Police Department. This slide shows the current staffing of the Police Department, with four members of the command staff, including the chief, a captain, and two lieutenants. There are 24 police sergeants and patrol officers, seven detectives and inspectors, including the community safety officer, and one school resource officer who works at the regional high school. The police chief also supervises the public safety dispatchers. The police chief also supervises the public safety dispatchers. The last new police officer position was created during the Clinton Administration when a federal grant was made available to hire new police officers. Uniformed police staffing has remained unchanged since 1996, despite a marked increase in call volume. A youth coordinator position was created in 2011 and funded at 20 hours per week through a grant from the Concord Carlisle Community Chest. The long-serving youth coordinator Jennifer Clark departed last May, in May of this year, and the vacancy in the position caused the Police Department, Community Chest, school officials, and others to discuss the possibility of a second school resource officer when working in the middle school. The Community Chest offered to financially support this new position with an incentive grant that would diminish over time. Our goals for the middle school resource officer include engaging students on a regular basis and a regular and consistent basis at a younger age to avoid delinquency and begin to address risky behaviors, including substance abuse, to build positive relations between students and police, to build and maintain strong relationships among the police, school administration, and parents. Concord Schools have 3,300 students and 750 employees. The National Association of School Resource Officer recommends that every school have at least one carefully selected, specially-trained school resource officer. It's a best practice to have one SRO, School Resource Officer, per 1,000 students. At the moment, Concord has just the one school resource officer working at the high school. Acton has three. The proposed budget for the middle school resource officer is shown here. It shows the seventeen thousand dollar grant in the first year from the Community Chest, matched by forty-eight thousand dollars that's available in what used to be called the Muse Stabilization Fund. It's now the Emergency Response Stabilization Fund, but it originated as a million-dollar contribution from the Muse Housing Project in recognition there would be a lot of public safety demand to respond out to that location. The Community Chest grant would be reduced to 11,500 in the second year, 6,000 in the third, and go to zero in the fourth year. The Muse Stabilization Fund money would have to be appropriated each year. The town would decide whether it would stay at the forty-eight thousand dollars or would increase, as shown here in the town budget. There are about 650,000 dollars remaining in that account. Again, the town funds would be transferred from the Stabilization Fund each year by vote at town meeting. The fund was created with a million dollars when the housing project was created. This would be the Police Department's first access and use of those funds. With safety and security of schoolchildren on everyone's mind, and using the funds donated by the Muse Housing Project and a generous grant from the Community Chest, makes sense to add this new police officer position that will primarily aid students working as a school resource officer. So I recommend your favorable action on Article nine.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. We'll hear now from Superintendent Hunter.
I'm here just to express our gratitude to the Police Department and the town for consideration of this article. Currently, we work very effectively with our one school resource officer. Oftentimes, however, that's in a very reactive mode, so we would very much look forward to having the opportunity for more proactive work, both at the middle and the high school. So we encourage your support and hope you'll consider this article tonight.
Thank you very much. I want to note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article nine, and I think, Mr. Tarpe, do you want to address the meeting on behalf of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, I'm Tom Tarpe, 169 Heath Bridge Road, member of the Finance Committee and speaking for the Finance Committee. For those of you who've never gone through an entire budget cycle with the Finance Committee, I have one suggestion. We currently have an opening on the Finance Committee, and we'd love to get your green cards-
And the green cards are in the hall.
Exactly. So the budgetary process within the Finance Committee is an extremely well-defined, transparent, publicly accessible process. I like to think that it is a model of good government, and it always is conducted with great sort of mutual respect between the Finance Committee and the budgeting entities of the town who come before us. It starts in July, when the Finance Committee solicits by letter from each of the budgeting entities answers to a number of questions that we ask, many of which are the same from year to year, some are different. But the basic, the essence of the letter is to solicit what are the budgetary priorities of those entities in the coming budget cycle. And then those entities meet with us starting in October, and we discuss the answers that they have given and the numbers that they have given, some of which are shocking. Typically, Mr. Whalen will join us and give us a full list of the funding requests that all of his department heads have asked for. And we all know that it's impossible for the town to meet all of those requests, most of which are well worth funding, but in their totality aren't within the ability of the town to fund. We recommend no action on this article, not because we take issue with the particular matter of the article. We rather recommend no action because it comes outside of the usual budget cycle. This particular resource officer, I believe, was part of the proposed total budget package that Mr. Whalen was examining last year for that, for the current fiscal year. But because of constraints on the town's budget, he complied with shrinking the total list into a number that the townspeople could afford, according to the guidelines set down by the Finance Committee. So it may be that having such a resource officer is a wonderful idea, but we think that it ought to be taken up in a different way. It ought either to be funded out of current resources in this fiscal year, or it ought to be suggested in the next fiscal year for funding. So for that reason, for the procedural reason, and to maintain the sort of transparency of our budgetary process, we recommend that you vote no on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpe. We will now open the floor to questions and comments. Microphone number two.
David Ropeek, 21 Baker Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Can the Superintendent or the Police Department help me understand just what exactly this person will actually do? A resource officer sounds great, and safety sounds great, but we're spending a bunch of money, and we're trying to teach our kids too, so how does this actually help our kids?
Certainly.
Thanks.
And I see the Chief's on his way over, too. Our partnership with the school resource officer is multifold. Clearly, there are incidents that may happen where we require his assistance and support. He also is in charge of supporting us on all of our security efforts here. He highly was the leader of a drill last week. All of our school shooting types of responses are run through him. What we're finding is that schools are much more complex, and student life is much more complex than it had been, and so there's a great number of times when we call on his assistance for students in need. Our vision here is to turn that so it's not just in times of need, but in a proactive stance, that he can be part of the education to students and part of the relationships that we form with students in a proactive way, which I think is especially true at the middle school. All the data shows that usage and issues are far, far more effectively prevented if we help our younger kids understand and can respond more effectively as they get older. So we'd like to change that model and broaden its breadth, so that rather just when there's particular incidents that arise where we need either the legal or the supervision, the support of the security, that we would have a broader base of supports and proactive education.
Chief O'Connor, is there anything you'd like to add?
Joseph O'Connor, Chief of Police. I think the Superintendent covered that very well. One of the things that we're seeing is issues going to younger and younger ages with different social, social issues, mental health issues, and so forth. And the formative years in talking to the Superintendent, Mr. Cameron, the principal at the middle school, is that they're seeing more and more issues that need intervention. And we believe the Police Department's philosophy and the School Department and is working together that we can police the School Department and parents and the students, have a better impact on having better outcomes for students as they grow through these adolescent years. It's very different, challenging times for young people. Students in the town have been affected by the things that have gone on around the country. If you talk to young people, you'll hear them talk, they may not be open all the time talking about it, but they're confronted with some very complex issues. And we believe if we take a proactive stance and have the second resource officer, that we'll be able to work with the schools to develop additional programming, that we can have interventions earlier, and also be preventative initiatives as well.
Thank you, Chief. Microphone number two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Carlin Reed, 83 Witsend.
Ms. Reed.
Speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Concord Carlisle, I encourage and urge and recommend affirmative action on this particular article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
De Ortoner, 169 Thero Street.
Ms. Ortoner.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just have a couple of questions with regards to logistics. How will, since the middle school has, I have two questions. The middle school has two buildings. How does a resource person work in that context? And then also, could you tell me, how many students are in the middle school and the high school combined? As you were, as was described earlier, that there should be a resource person for every 1,000 students.
Sure. So the middle school, we operate out of two buildings for everything that we do. So the SRO will be having that same challenge that the administrators currently have in any other shared, shared leadership, where we move them depending on where the needs are, while we schedule them as much as possible as well. So it is a challenge. I will take that little pitch to talk about the challenges of the middle school. Combined enrollment, 1,300 students here at the high school, just over 700 at the middle school, for a total of 2,000.
Okay. And does the resource person wear a uniform, or are they in street clothes?
Typically, he is in uniform, occasionally in street clothes, almost always in uniform.
He or she?
He, yeah. In uniform.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Let's see, microphone number two, are you, are you just standing, or? No, okay, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jonathan Cash from 1114 Little Road.
Mr. Cash.
Yeah. First thing I want to say is that I do have two daughters that are in the school system, Thero Elementary, and also one that just entered the middle school. After hearing from the Finance Committee individual, what I would say tonight to the audience here is I think it'd be unconscionable to think that we're not going to vote on this because of procedure or how it falls in the annual budget process. I think it's imperative that we look at improving safety and security within the school, and I think the SRO, the school resource officer, is a critical means of doing that. So I think that it's imperative that we do vote on this, and I think the amount of money that we're looking at is negligible regarding the safety in our school that could be afforded by another school resource officer. I know a lot of parents, including myself, until tonight, were not entirely clear on what the SRO does at school, but I think it's imperative to understand that it's not just another uniform person that's providing a presence. The school resource officer is a dedicated individual that his full-time job is to there to be at the school, working with the administrative staff, the educators, the teachers, and also the students, to make sure that safety is a number-one priority to prevent crises before they happen. It's also important to note that the SROs do go through a very specific training program that includes crisis planning and prevention, child and adolescent development, conflict resolution, mental health protocols, de-escalation skills, as well as drug and bullying prevention. And again, the Chief did allude to the fact that we've seen a lot of violence in schools, thankfully not here in Concord. But I think it's important for us as a town to realize that we need to be doing more, and this is a first step in doing more. And it also sends a message to our kids that we, as parents in the community, do care and we're willing to put resources towards that. So I think my time is up, but I can't state strongly enough that I think a second resource officer is needed, and we should vote yes on this.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Ruth Lauer, Kyes Road.
Ms. Lauer.
Thank you. Could I have some clarification on the funding for this? Because while I absolutely agree with Mr. Tarpe's point that everything that we spend our money on needs to be balanced and carefully weighed, and we know that the town manager spends a lot of time making some really tough decisions on how we're going to afford our activities. But in this case, I thought the money already existed and could only be spent for public safety, and therefore, and perhaps over time, we will have that opportunity to balance whether we build more into our annual budget. But for the purposes of this town meeting, we would be drawing on funds that already exist.
Mr. Whalen?
That's true. Heather, could I have the slide that shows the budget? That would be true for this coming year, that the funds would come both from the Muse Stabilization Fund, which already exists, and the grant from the Community Chest. Then a year later, the town would face the choice, as the Community Chest grant is reduced, do we want to increase the contribution from the Muse Stabilization Fund, or do we want to go to the general fund of the police budget and make up the difference? So the town will face that choice in year two.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
David Allen, Heath Bridge Road.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. May I follow on some of the questions about, say, why are we doing this now? Recognizing Mr. Tarpe's voice from the FENCOM, our quite highly respected FENCOM, might I perhaps invite from those who brought this matter forward at this special town meeting, reasons why it was felt important to do it at this time, rather than wait half a year to the next town meeting? Why, to use a phrase from our federal discussions, why out of regular order? That might just go some distance to bringing some thinking together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen?
Madam Moderator, I think it started with that issue that we've had a long-serving youth coordinator funded by the Community Chest. That position was, became vacant in May. It filled an important need. We think that need could be enhanced by the presence of a police officer in the middle school. We have funds offered by the Community Chest, plus the Muse Stabilization money that's been there for several years. The Police Department has not tapped into it. This is a need the school and police administrations have been discussing for some time, so this seemed like a good opportunity. I very much respect the Finance Committee's process and what they go through, and I understand their concerns, but it did seem like the funds are available and the need is present.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Regina Ryder, 96 The Valley Road. Yeah, this is actually about the youth coordinator. So the youth coordinator was paid through the Community Chest. Do I understand that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So why didn't we fill that position?
It was the view, there was discussion at the time when the coordinator announced her plans to resign, and there was a discussion that felt although that position was helpful in the community, that the presence of a police officer in the middle school would provide added value for both school, police, and parents and students.
So if we had, again, a youth coordinator, how would that position be paid for?
We don't anticipate filling that vacancy at this time. We haven't had any discussions on that. The focus has been on the second school resource officer.
Okay. Thank you.
Microphone number one.
Lori Gilpozares, 1376 Old Malbo Road. I have a question, Madam Moderator. Have there been specific incidents at the middle school level that have required the presence of a police officer, as opposed, for instance, to a more preventative program requiring hiring of an additional mental health or social worker type of position?
Looks like Chief O'Connor is prepared to answer this one for us.
Yes.
Yes, a school resource officer has worked with schools handling incidents that come into the police realm of handling things that may go to the court or be handled through diversion, also helped facilitate with mental health workers as well, along with our partners in the school department.
Microphone, do you have a follow-up question?
I do, just to, why not consider a mental health preventative program for the middle school level as opposed to the police? I understand there are incidents ongoing, but does it raise to the level of needing a police presence in middle school as opposed to just more preventative? And I understand the value of the training that you've received, but it's just police versus non-police.
Just to say, we highly value the work of mental health workers, and quite often, our department helps facilitate that. The Police Department is, comes up, has a lot of information of things that may happen outside of the school, that happen in the town or in a residence, and we're able to collaborate with the, with the school department to make sure that proper interventions are put in place when appropriate. And our role and our primary philosophy is not to take juveniles or people into the court system. Our role is to facilitate people getting mental health issues or whatever other types of intervention that is necessary.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Sue Felshen, nineteen Sunnyside Lane.
Ms. Felshen.
Our children are our most precious resource, and the Police Department provides us with invaluable services, but by taking up this article outside of the regular town, annual town meeting process, we just have no way to know if this is the best way to help our children, and we should wait for annual town meeting to find that out. I would also like to say, people of Concord, read the police log. Over the last few weeks, a quarter or so of, well, not quite that many, but a great many items have been completely unnecessary uses of our police resources, such as perfectly-well dogs in safe situations. If you see something, you don't always have to say something, and perhaps we could redistribute our resources in a different and more effective way.
Thank you, Ms. Felshen. Microphone number four.
Jennifer Clark, ninety-six Blueberry Lane.
Ms. Clark.
So, I'm the Jennifer Clark that's been referenced a few times in the slides. It was my recommendation upon vacating the position at the end of June, that the town seriously consider taking the responsibilities that I held and putting them towards a second school resource, school resource officer. A couple of reasons. One, the Community Chest had been funding the youth services coordinator position since two thousand and ten. We are at two thousand and eighteen. It is very difficult to find funding outside of the Community Chest to support this kind of position, and so for longevity and sustainability of the work, embedding it into a police department and a school resource officer seemed the most successful route to go. I want to recognize Chief O'Connor and his staff. I think a lot of people think of police work, and they don't see the relationship to human services work, but what Joe and his staff are doing on a daily basis is not only just safety and security, but also connecting our most vulnerable residents to the services that they need. And so, a relationship gets developed with a school resource officer. There may be no criminal activity, but there may be an opportunity to get a student or a family connected to services sooner. And Joe's staff and the middle school staff worked tirelessly in developing relationships with our community partners. So, I am in full support of this, and I see it as an opportunity to really build on an existing relationship. When you do think about one school resource officer, K through twelve, it's my understanding that our school resource officer also has responsibility for elder affairs cases. It's too much. It's not opportunity to be proactive, it's reactive. I love Officer Camilleri, and I can't believe that he's been in this job pre-two thousand eleven, post-Margery Douglas in Newtown, post, where's my phone? That, that phone has created a lot of new issues in our K through eight system that were not previously part of the work that a school resource officer had to manage. So, I really encourage a vote on Article Nine.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Wally Johnston, fourteen-seventy-nine Main Street, member of the school committee, Concord School Committee, and the Concord-Carlyle Regional School Committee, but arising on my own behalf.
Proceed.
Thank you. I am in favor of this article, as people have mentioned, and I, especially Ms. Clark speaking to us, who has as much understanding of this situation as anyone, and hearing from our superintendent and our police chief, and seeing the good work that Officer Camilleri does here in this building, recognizing the aging buildings of the middle school and the aging systems of the middle school. We've had two instances this year already where we had, it would have been helpful to have a resource officer in the building. I think the sooner that children become comfortable with this structure, the better. They move to the high school, understanding that this is a valuable resource to them. So, I, I think this is a valuable thing to do at this point in time, and I, we have opportunities throughout the year that are, that make sense, and when there are opportunities to implement those, and there is a town meeting body who can approve that and consider that and approve it or disprove it, I think that, I think there are many things that are worthwhile to, to take up, even though they are outside of the normal budget process. I believe this to be one of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Matt Johnson, twenty-one Withers Street, member of the planning board, but speaking on my own behalf.
Mr. Johnson.
Actually, it's worth pointing to the previous remarks about, hey, there are lots of really potentially worthwhile things that we could do that come up during the year in between annual town meetings. And indeed, if we choose to move to a semi-annual town meeting process and, you know, redo our budgets twice a year, that might be a way to go, and we could spend more nights a year in meetings like this. But, you know, I think that leaving this immediate issue aside, we have an issue with discipline here, and it's not just this article, there are others that are before us this evening, that, yes, once the town warrant is opened, people can put in what they want, but this is supposed to be special town meeting, and it's supposed to be about a very restricted set of issues. And when we open it up to cover whatever business, you know, each department wants to have, it means we've lost our discipline, it means that we're encouraging others in subsequent years to bring whatever they have, and we will go to beyond thirteen articles, which is already unprecedented, into who knows, maybe a multi-evening special town meeting in the future. It won't be so special anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks like we're ready for a vote on this article. This, again, is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Nine, please raise their ballots. Thank you. All those opposed. Okay, I feel pretty comfortable that that's a two-thirds vote in favor of Article Nine, and I do so declare. We'll now move on to Article Ten, which will be up here in a minute. This is a, this one is state grant for transit services appropriation of funds, and I won't read this motion, it's up on the screen. We'll hear from Ms. Rasmussen. Do we have a second for the motion under Article Ten? I see that we do. Ms. Rasmussen.
Good evening. The town is eligible to receive three thousand two hundred dollars from the state's transportation network surcharge fees. In order to use these funds, town meeting needs to direct or appropriate the funds because the state has designated this revenue as special revenue. That requires appropriation by the local legislative body, which is you. It is anticipated that these funds will be folded into the town's annual budget process in the future. The legislature passed Chapter one-eighty-seven of the Acts of two thousand sixteen, authorizing a surcharge of twenty cents on all rides provided by transportation network companies. These companies use a digital network to connect riders with drivers in pre-arranging and providing transportation services. Examples of such companies are Uber and Lyft. The surcharge fees are deposited in the state's transportation network fund. Fifty percent of these monies are distributed to cities and towns. The amount of money Concord receives is based on the number of rides that originate in Concord. In this case, thirty-two thousand one hundred four trips at ten cents a trip is three thousand two hundred ten dollars. So, what can these funds be used for? These funds may only be used to address the impact or impacts of transportation network services on roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or another public purpose related to the operation of a transportation network service in Concord, such as complete streets program and other programs that support alternative transportation modes. As noted in Concord's most recent comprehensive plan, there are several transportation and mobility areas identified that, identified. The four listed on this slide are expand mobility options for the non-driving public, reduce the number of vehicles on the road, increase bicycle and pedestrian connections, and adopt a complete streets approach. These are most closely associated with the purposes for these funds. The planning division staff has identified three potential projects to the town manager that could benefit from these funds, and these are examples of local projects. Survey transportation needs of residents to determine the extent of need and level of service or interest. Use the funds as a partial match for a federal grant to study feasibility of implementing a transit service that could result in a reduction of traffic congestion. Use the funds to support a pilot study of ride sharing or micro-transit in this area. And that's the article.
Thank you very much. I believe we'll hear from Ms. Hotchkiss on behalf of the select board.
Hi, Jane Hotchkiss, fourteen-seventy-nine Main Street, member of the select board, and speaking on behalf of the select board. It's hard to follow Ms. Rasmussen since she easily identified most of the points that I wanted to make on behalf of the select board. As we've heard since its creation, in two thousand and sixteen, the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund has made an allocation of money available based on the state's estimate of the town's originating rides. The state, the state's allotment to Concord is that thirty-two-ten, which if appropriated tonight will support roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure needs. Given the number of needs and interests captured by the committee work and identified and envisioned Concord, our fabulous new long-range plan, which if anybody hasn't spent at least an evening with, I strongly advise it, we could, we could put this money towards town transit, bike and pedestrian-friendly roads and bridges, and a long-term commitment to reducing motor vehicle dependence and traffic volume throughout Concord. The select board strongly encourages affirmative action on Article Ten, which while small in allotment, is still a share. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I will note that the finance committee recommends affirmative action on Article Ten. We'll open the floor now for questions and comments. Microphone number four.
Nancy Brown, ninety-six Forest Ridge Road.
Ms. Brown.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters, the League recommends a yes vote on this article.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Yes, Sheldon Hines, seventy-four The Valley Road.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering whether the article, as it's stated, is, is complete in that it doesn't say to what entity the funds will be appropriated. Is it, can we assume based upon prior precedent that this goes to the general fund of the town? Is that, do we need to amend the, the article to say where it's going to, to be, for it to be effective? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, who'd like to answer that? Thank you. We'll hear from Ms. LeFleur, our town finance director.
So, I believe that the language in the warrant article is complete. This is being appropriated to this particular warrant article, so it will, the funding will stay with this warrant article until it is expended, and as was said earlier, we're hoping to fold this into the fiscal year budget appropriation beginning next year.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Ruth Lauer, Kais Road.
Ms. Lauer, you can bend that microphone down a little bit if you like.
I have a question about what happens in years going forward. Will we find that this is now a staple article now that the grant has been realized? Will we continually need to apply for it and put it on our, our warrant? Or will it automatically, once we accept it the first time, will, will we automatically share it? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LeFleur, I see you approaching the microphone.
Madam Moderator, we do expect this to be a recurring source of revenue, and as I mentioned previously, we would take this in and use this to fund the town's operating budget going forward, so we do not expect to have a separate warrant article in the future.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it appears that we are ready for a vote on Article Ten. All those in favor, please hold up your ballots. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please hold up your ballots. Well, that does look like a unanimous vote. Oh, there's someone holding it up? Okay, sorry about that. Okay. So, it's a near-unanimous vote, and I do so declare that Article Ten passes. We'll now proceed to Article Eleven. The motion is on the screen. Mr. Whalen moves that the town raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars to be added to the funds appropriated under item number two, legal services of Article Seven of the two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting, said some to be expended under the direction of the town manager. Do we have a second for this motion? I see that we do. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Eleven requests that the town vote to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the funds appropriated last spring for the legal services account. This slide shows the history of the legal account. Town, the town allocated two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for legal services sixteen years ago, in between two thousand and two to two thousand and eighteen. Last spring, for the first time since that time, the legal service budget was increased by twenty-five thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand. This slide shows that our two thousand and eighteen legal expenses greatly exceeded the funds available in the legal services account, with total expenditures last year at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The additional funding was transferred from the finance committee's reserve fund and was used to cover the extraordinary expenses because the town's budget is appropriated as forty distinct line items, and funds may not be transferred among those line items except by town meeting. Costs have increased in the past two years due in part to higher collective bargaining costs. We have police union negotiations and a new contract with the highway department employees that we've engaged council in to assist with negotiations. That hasn't happened in the past. It's added to our expenses. The Giraud property land negotiations, council was involved in that, and they were extensive. And that settlement with the WR Grace Company that we discussed earlier also contributed to our higher legal costs. Active litigation also contributed to this high legal cost. In the past sixteen years, we've exceeded the legal budget on only three occasions, generally by a modest amount. This size, so this slide shows our legal expenses for general matters for the past three years. Our total annual legal spending has increased significantly in the past two years, as shown Our total annual legal spending has increased significantly in the past two years, as shown in the first line. The next line shows our legal expenses exclusive of the cost of maintaining the public's rights to access Estabrook Road. And the third line shows our expenses related to that litigation. Projecting costs going forward, town council has prepared a budget related to the Estabrook matter. An event litigation moves to the discovery phase through a motion for summary judgment into trial. The total cost for that expenditure is expected to be $250,000. We're optimistic. There may be some settlement. We've engaged in negotiations, but we do have to plan for the future. These additional funds would allow us some flexibility in addressing the collective bargaining, as well as the litigation. This slide shows the legal expenditures for a few towns in our area. Both our appropriations and our expenditure for legal services are similar to those towns around us. I've showed you the historic appropriations going back to 2002 to demonstrate that we have managed the legal services account very carefully. We've tried to avoid litigation wherever possible. I respectfully request your support for Article 11.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. The Select Board and the Finance Committee both recommend affirmative action on Article 11, and we'll now open the floor for questions and comments. Microphone number two.
Madam Moderator, Dennis Fiori, 309 Strawberry Hill Road.
Mr. Fiori.
I note the huge amount of money expended on this lawsuit for access to the Estabrook Woods off Estabrook Road. I don't understand it when there are two other public accesses to this property, and why the landowners, as far as I know and good faith, have wanted to move with the town on this, protecting their private property. I don't think many people understand that only seven percent of Estabrook Woods is not owned by private landowners, and so I don't understand why, with a tight budget, we're spending this kind of money when there's already access to this property.
Is that a rhetorical question or an actual question?
An actual question.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whalen.
Well, in December of 2016, Estabrook Road was posted for the first time as private property, and it was town's belief that the public has had access to the discontinued portion, the unpaid portion of Estabrook Road, from where the pavement ends to the Carlisle Line. And we engaged in discussions with the abutting property owners to try to work out a settlement. Came very close to agreeing on a memorandum and understanding regarding the use of the property without litigating the ownership issue, but we felt that we came to a point where the other parties were considering litigating against us, and we had no choice.
Thank you.
Microphone number one.
Pierce Brown, 154 Boles Hill Road.
Yes, proceed.
For the past eighty-three years, it has been my good fortune to live in Concord, and my privilege to have known personally the Emerson's, the Buttricks, and the Robbs, who made sure the Estabrook Woods still look today the way they did eighty years ago. I also know the present-day Concordians, whose generosity continues to honor this legacy from the past, among them the Rasmussen's, Robbs, Reeds, and Harvard University. Last year, the town of Concord filed a lawsuit against these landowners, some of the town's most generous citizens. The suit was initiated with little warning to the defendants, a sharp departure from traditional notions of civility and equitable conduct. These owners have always allowed access to their Estabrook Woods properties, and until recently, their goodwill and generosity has been reciprocated with caring and gratitude. The town wishes to alter this successful formula from the past by asking a court to grant it a right of public access where none ever existed before. The owners are vigorously defending their land's historic past in spite of the enormous cost to themselves. The town has spent $250,000 for this suit alone, and the long discovery process is just beginning. Article 11 seeks an additional $100,000 to cover unspecified town legal costs.
Sir, you are out of time, sir.
Some foresee this number rising to a million dollars.
Sir, I am sorry you're out of time.
Sorry?
You're out of time, I'm sorry.
One sentence?
One sentence.
Tonight, we stand at a crossroads. Do we authorize ever more funds for a lawsuit of bizarre and questionable merit, or take this opportunity to reevaluate the wisdom of pressing onward with this suit?
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we recommend positive affirmative action on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Microphone number four.
Bill Hereford, 102 Prairie Street. You mentioned that some of the legal fees had to do with collective bargaining. Could you speak to those lawsuits?
Mr. Whalen.
Madam Moderator, the collective bargaining didn't involve litigation per se. It was having an attorney represent. The unions in those two cases had attorneys representing them. We had our attorney at the table. Normally, the town manager and the department head do the negotiations for the collective bargaining agreement, but we ran into several significant issues, so we asked our attorney to sit with us at the table, and that added to our legal expenses. There wasn't really litigation on that.
Thank you.
Microphone number three.
Sheldon Hines, 74 The Valley Road.
Mr. Hines.
Given that the extra monies are primarily for continuing the lawsuit against the landowners in Estabrook Woods, I'm against transferring this money, primarily because the merits of the lawsuit are dubious at best, given that the landowners own clear title to the pathway in question, and the town has no document whatsoever to establish right of way or a pathway through there. So we should be, to the concept that discovery is needed, when given the absence of a document in the hands of the town and the clear documentation of the ownership of that pathway by the landowners, we shouldn't be continuing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Brooks Reed, 366 Estabrook Road.
Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am a taxpayer and a defendant in the Estabrook Path litigation. I'm speaking as a defendant. It is now nearly a year since the Estabrook lawsuit was brought against me, my wife Susanna, Neil Rasmussen, Anna Rasmussen, Russell Robb, Leslie Robb, Tom Falwell, John Baker, Nina Nielsen, and the president and trustees of Harvard College. I just named all ten people and organizations who are defendants in this suit, and none of them have chosen to settle. Taxpayers should think about what this means. My wife and I will not settle. After one year and a quarter million dollars spent, the town has presented absolutely no legally relevant documents to support their assertion of control or entitlement of access of the portion of Estabrook Path we own. There is no factual basis for their claim. Our property is as we purchased it, unencumbered private property, and we will defend it. The Select Board, town manager, and town council initiated this action entirely in secret. There is still no information available to inform taxpayers for what will become perhaps a half a million dollar spending decision. Now that the suit is in the discovery phase, the relevant documentation, or more importantly, the lack of any documentation supporting the town's position will become visible to the public through the open process of court proceedings. We encourage everyone to follow this case on the Massachusetts Land Court website. Read the filings, become informed. Regarding the vote for funding this evening, we are not asking anyone to vote either for or against funding. We are asking taxpayers to pay attention to the facts, which will now be emerging so that you may make informed decisions about the case in 2019, at the 2019 town meeting, when the town comes back to ask you for more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Microphone number two.
John Boynton, 72 Chestnut Street.
Mr. Boynton.
Thank you. I've been distressed by the dispute between the town and the owners of Estabrook Woods. While it's impossible to know the outcome of the town's lawsuit, we all know that lawsuits are enormously expensive, often denominated in years and millions of dollars. The disputed trail which connects Concord and Carlisle is not particularly valuable as a means of travel. Lowell Road and Monument Street are more efficient for that purpose. Rather, that trail is valuable because it provides access to miles and miles of trails that traverse more than 1,000 acres of privately-owned property. I've been an avid and appreciative user of the Estabrook Woods since my childhood. Estabrook is a Concord treasure, a treasure made accessible to us by the generosity of those who own and maintain the woods. I want to give my thanks to the Robbs, the Reeds, the Rasmussen's, Harvard, Middlesex, and any other landowners that have graciously allowed me and all of us to pass over their trails. This is a risky and expensive case to pursue, and I think all stakeholders, the town, its citizens, and the private landowners, are better served by a more pragmatic solution. Rather than invest hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars in this lawsuit, I prefer to see the town direct its resources toward a settlement that restores the public-private partnership that functioned perfectly well for so many decades. Apparently, nobody knew who owned the trail before, and evidently, that didn't matter. So what changed? Why do we need a legal resolution? What will the town gain by winning this suit? And what could it lose? Let's take a step back and consider the big picture. De-escalate. Tempers are inflamed and feelings are hurt, but reconciliation is possible. It always is. It might start with an apology. It will take courage and strong leadership, but it will be worth the effort.
Thank you, Mr. Boynton. We will not have displays of emotion. Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
Gregor McGregor, 70 Williams Road.
Mr. McGregor.
I speak as a person who used to be involved in this litigation. I'm not working for any party in it. If I'm familiar with it, I will be brief to say that I'm against the appropriation of this additional monies. Whoever thought it would be cheap to sue Harvard University, the major owner of the linear length of Estabrook Trail, should reconsider. And at any time available, one should reconsider suing the Rasmussen's, who are the donors of the entire new wing of the Concord Museum. And building finally on the excellent point of the previous speaker, sometimes when one is standing at a cliff, progress is turning around and stepping the other way.
Microphone number three.
Shelley Morse, I used to live on Estabrook, I'm sorry.
Ms. Morse.
50 Manuel Drive. I am shocked, and I think everyone here should be shocked, that we, the taxpayers, are being sued by our town representatives using our tax money. That is a bizarre turn for a quote "free" country, and that all of our land is at risk if our town officials are allowed to use town funds to sue us. That could make our suit last beyond anyone's lifetime, because taxpayers' money is always available. The very threat that our town government might sue us would cause us to agree and give up property, because we know we cannot win. It is a frightening situation, and I think we all should recognize that. We've been watching recently the rule of the mob, and mob rule is cruel, and we must realize that it is already showing up in Concord.
Thank you. I think we'll hear briefly from the Select Board.
Mike Lawson, 1695 Lowell Road, member of the Select Board and speaking for the Board.
Mr. Lawson.
Thank you. The town filed this lawsuit only after over a year or so of negotiations with the parties, and after only, we were threatened by a lawsuit. These events of the suit have failed to produce a solution to date, but the town really felt it had no alternative but to take the matter to court. The suit had and still has a single purpose: to protect the public's right to access Estabrook Woods along the Estabrook Trail. The town makes absolutely no claim of ownership of the trail and seeks only to ensure the continuing rights of the public to use the trail to access the woods. Unwarranted excursions onto the abutting private lands, sometimes quite nasty, protracted negotiations to settle the public access issue, a threatened lawsuit by the property owners, and the ultimate suit brought by the town were all extremely disheartening. Many feelings were hurt. Other landowners abutting the trail were also necessarily named in the suit, and the town took action it wished it hadn't needed to take. Suing your fellow citizens is not a Concordian thing to do, and I am personally deeply saddened and very sorry for the hurt that has occurred. In an attempt to settle the matter, we urged all parties to enter into formal mediation. A mediator was agreed to by all the parties, and we began mediation in May. We met twice with mediator and exchanged settlement proposals. Unfortunately, we were still unable to reach an agreement. Some of the parties then withdrew from mediation. Settlement discussions are continuing, however, with some of the parties, and the town is hopeful that it will soon reach agreement with property owners along more than fifty percent of the Estabrook Trail. And we will continue to make every effort to work with the remaining property owners along the trail to reach the settlement that would be mutually beneficial to all parties and would serve to protect the woods. The legal action, subsequent efforts at mediation, and the continuing discussions with landowners are about preserving longstanding public access to the Estabrook Trail. The town believes it has an obligation to ensure continuing access along the trail that is consistent with the conservation of Estabrook Woods. The town is in no way making any interesting claim in the abutting private lands, nor is the town seeking public access through or across the abutting private property in Estabrook Woods. This case, sad as it is, is only about ensuring that the public can continue to use Estabrook Trail without express permission. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Microphone number four.
Jeff Adams, Farmers Cliff Road.
Mr. Adams.
I am not in favor of this article, but if it is the will of town meeting to approve additional funding towards this lawsuit, I would simply encourage focused and continued efforts by the Select Board and the ten private landowners to negotiate a public license for the use of the trails on private land in Estabrook Woods, first discussed in 2016. Success of that approach would avoid the excessive expense of legal funds for both sides of this disagreement and arrive at a reasonable solution. I believe that can be accomplished without these additional town funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Microphone number one.
Paul Jameson, College Road. I would like to say this is very much about the public access. This is so that everybody in the town can walk along the old Estabrook Path and into the woods, and enjoy it, and have access. A number of the wealthy landowners along Estabrook Road in particular have made this difficult, and I think it's important that there should be open access, as there is in Europe, to public lands. The public should be able to walk down an old cart path, which Estabrook Road was. It's important for everybody in the town to be able to go on a walk when that space is available.
Thank you. Microphone Microphone number two.
Sue Felshen, nineteen Sunnyside Lane.
Ms. Felshen.
I wonder what would have happened had none of the other articles on the warrant caused the warrant to be opened? Would we have had a special town meeting for this article alone? And I wonder why we can't put this through the normal budgetary process and weigh it against all other uses of funds by the town, rather than bringing it up at special town meeting.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Cyrus Gibson, eighty-eight Walden Street.
Yes, sir.
This issue of the motion is the tip of the iceberg, as I think is implicit in a lot of what's been said. I'm going to vote against this $100,000, not because it doesn't specify sufficiently what it's going to be spent on. Some of it may be the lawsuit that's the subject of a lot of the comments here, but because I believe the town needs, as its citizens, to send a signal to the, those involved in the lawsuit, both sides if you will, but particularly the plaintiffs in the case, that we want to see more done to resolve it out of court. It looks like it's going to be at least two years, as I understand it, before a judgment can be reached by the land court in the state. And the estimate of costs on the part of the town alone has exceeded $500,000 and may be much more than that, not to mention five separate lawsuits, five separate lawyers operating for each of the five defendants. This is an unprecedented amount of money, a very unfortunate situation, and I can't believe that there isn't an opportunity, as suggested by Mr. Boynton and others, for a real settlement of this. And I think attention needs to be drawn by rejecting this motion so that everyone sees that there's a better path.
Thank you. Microphone number two. You look familiar.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Eric Van Loon, Martha's Point Road.
Ms. Van Loon.
Former, former town official, but speaking privately. I'm sure I'm not alone in feeling disheartened and sad that currently the town is in litigation with some of our most respected and most generous citizens. I urge, however, affirmative vote on this Article XI for three factual reasons. The first is, it has been said, and it's technically correct, that the town did initiate the lawsuit. However, less than a week, or one week, the prior week before the town filed a lawsuit, it received a letter, I'm going to read a couple sentences from it, from the private landowners. It says, "We believe we have no choice but to seek judicial determination of our rights. We are enclosing a draft complaint," that's the legal document that starts a lawsuit." So this is from the private landowners. "We are prepared to pursue vindication of our rights through any and all means necessary and for whatever term of time is necessary." It concludes, "We will refrain from filing suit for a period of ten days," if you'll discuss. In other words, this legal situation had been brewing, growing, getting bad for a long period of time. Both sides spent a lot of money on lawyers, and we're now in this unfortunate situation. The other two very quick factual points are that a lot of the money that was spent up to this point in time was spent by both sides in researching old legal documents, old looking in land court, things like that. So approximately $100,000 was spent before the litigation even started, and some of the additional money was spent on the mediation efforts to settle. And finally, as was pointed out...
You are over time, sir.
One sentence.
You never did this, though.
There's no bell. There is continuing discussion on settlement with a number of landowners, not all, and this special town meeting is not the time to make a decision about the merits of a lawsuit. We'll have a full town meeting in six months. There'll be more hearings then, there'll be more information, and I suspect the factual circumstances will have changed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
Hugh McCrory, Lee Drive.
Yes, sir.
I think this is clearly a difficult situation that both parties have found themselves in, but I want to commend the town officials for doing their job. The member of the Select Committee has clearly stated the reasons for the litigation. I agree with the other members. We shouldn't litigate this tonight. This is a request for a decision that's already been made for more funds. For officials doing their job, it's regrettable that the defendant who spoke earlier says he will not settle. I urge him to reconsider, or at least to discuss.
Ms. Reed, would you contain yourself, please? Thank you.
So, as regrettable as this is, I'll be voting for this, because I think this is a precedent, and I disagree with the previous speaker saying that the town is suing its taxpayers. The town is protecting its taxpayers from a very small minority of taxpayers who won't discuss or won't negotiate. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Hi, David Rowe Peak, twenty-one Baker Avenue. I want to second what the previous speaker was just saying. This isn't, in my mind, just about Estabrook Woods. If in the future, somebody else contests, I'm supposed to give my dog a pill, excuse me, I'm going to turn this off. Remind me when we get home. If somebody in the future with some other property contests some public usage and is, for whatever reason, adamant about their position, the town by relenting here sets a precedent that this is okay behavior. And that doesn't seem to me, I'm not condoning anybody's individual behavior in this, but that doesn't seem to me a reasoned way to resolve who gets to use land. Backing off of this sets a dangerous precedent that could be applied in lots of other circumstances for a lot of the land that makes Concord the wonderful town that we all live in. So it's the precedent that I wanted to raise.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, I'm Carl Packard, eighty-six Butternut Circle, member of the Finance Committee, but not speaking for the Finance Committee and not even...
Mr. Packard.
Not even speaking about finance. And I think one of the, some of the points made by Rowe Peak, Mr. Rowe Peak, are quite good. I just want to kind of bring it to a point, is that by not voting in favor of this article, you are choosing to not give our town officials the resources they need to defend the public's right against usurpation by private interests.
Thank you, Mr. Packard. Microphone number four.
Hi, Catherine Angel, two sixty-seven Main Street. I'd like to reinforce comments actually of several of the last speakers, and commend the Select Board for their working on behalf of all of the citizens of the town in order to protect, as they said, the public's right to access this treasure of Concord, without making any claims of ownership, but establishing the historic use of this trail by the public. The town and all of its citizens can't risk the possible loss of access to this treasure. The Estabrook Woods Access Study Committee had as its very first recommendation that the town needed to legally establish the public right of access to this, and that was a multi-month process involving many people, and that was the primary recommendation. I agree that this is protecting the taxpayers and sets a precedent that we not let public access be limited by the people who happen to abut a beautiful treasure, and I think that protections should be able to be worked out that protect the private property rights of those landowners, along with letting the public have its historic access.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three. Are you waiting to speak up there?
Yes.
Yes.
David Bell, may I call the question, please?
That is a non-debatable motion. It does require a second. Do I see a second? I do. All those in favor of calling the question? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion carries, and we will proceed to a vote on Article XI. All those in favor of Article XI, please raise your ballots. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion carries by majority, and I do so declare. We'll now proceed to Article XII. This motion is that Mr. McCain moves that the town take affirmative action on Article XII as it is printed in the warrant. This is in the nature of a zoning change and therefore requires a two-thirds vote. Do we have a second on the motion? I see that we do. Thank you very much, and we will hear from Ms. Liz Rust.
Good evening. I'm Liz Rust. I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office.
With those of you who are departing, please do so quietly. We do still have business to attend to. Thank you. Ms. Rust.
Resident of two oh one Commonwealth Avenue and presenting for the Select Board tonight. Did you do the motion already? Yes.
We did the motion.
Yep. Thank you. So this article proposes an amendment to the Black Birch Two Alternative Plan Residential Development. This was approved on Article forty-two of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting and to accept a donation of $1 million as an alternative to the provision of affordable units. This property is located in a limited industrial Park Two zoning district, and it required this alternative PRD with the plan approved at town meeting due to its unique nature of the zoning district. From the town meeting approval in 2017, a special permit was then issued by the ZBA. So here is located, this development is located up on Forest Ridge, off of Route sixty-two and Main Street on the, by the Acton Town Line. Black Birch is an age-restricted condominium development, built in two phases, as it says. Twenty-five homes in Phase One have all been sold. They include three moderate-income units, and sixteen homes are planned in Phase Two, and the first one was just sold last week, and these include two low-income units. When we use the term "low income," that refers to, it's a general term for being sold to households earning eighty percent of the area median income. That's the affordable housing speak, and that translates to an income of $65,000 for a household of two. Thank you. When presented in 2017, all parties assumed that these two low-income units would count towards the state's ten percent threshold. This is the subsidized housing inventory, and this is a state counting of deed-restricted properties, that should you reach the ten percent, the town has more control over private development or development in town. And in May, the state clarification of this policy, the state, DHCD is the state agency, and they clarified a prior policy whereby developments that prohibited children were no longer eligible to count on this ten percent inventory. When this policy was issued, the Black Birch Development Project was in mid-construction, and the permit had been issued. The town applied to the state for a waiver, which was denied, and at that point, as an option for the town, the developer offered the million-dollar donation after that denial of the waiver. So the options presented tonight are to either accept the donation or to continue as permitted with the two units. The two units would be, the donation would be, excuse me, the two units would be restricted but wouldn't count towards this inventory, the ten percent inventory, and if the donation was accepted, those funds would be made available through an affordable housing restricted fund as detailed in the warrant. So in terms of the units, this is, as the slide says, this is the default option. So should the article not pass, this is what would go forward. The units would be restricted through a local restriction, which means that the town would be responsible for defining that legally and monitoring the restriction for the units. The requirements are slightly more administrative in that case and more burdensome from the town, but there is still some precedent here. In terms of counting, just a brief moment on the impact of the counting. Concord is above this ten percent threshold now, and the threshold changes every ten years. The ten percent is a percentage, so it has a numerator, denominator. The denominator changes every ten years with the census, and in 2020, coming up in a couple of years, Concord is still projected to be above that ten percent. No, one back. Yep. So in terms of the payment, as indicated in the warrant, the funds would be placed in a dedicated affordable housing fund, as proposed by the ZBA and approved by the Select Board. There are different options available to the town, including stabilization funds, revolving funds, gift funds, or other mechanisms. The Select Board would, has reviewed some of those options last month, and will take this up should the article pass. One question that's been raised is how many SHI-compliant affordable units could be created with a million dollars? This figure varies significantly on whether there are other funds that are leveraged, whether the town is paying for all the funds, whether there are any land costs, rental versus ownership, and other site particulars, but a reasonable planning number is $350,000 or $400,000 per unit, which would translate to 2.5 units that could be created with a million dollars in a more general kind of sense. Some specifics that have been raised to illustrate what might be done with a million dollars is if the Concord Housing Authority created some units on land it already owns, it's talked about that, it has a couple of parcels that might be feasible, they could create some units there. The CHDC, Concord Housing Development Corporation, has investigated converting existing condominiums from market-rate condominiums to affordable, and again, these would be opportunities that would produce units that would count towards a subsidized housing inventory. The Jarrow House Project, the Jarrow land was talked about tonight from a recreation standpoint, but there's also a housing opportunity on that land, and that's estimated at $350,000.
Ms. Rust, you're about a minute over time.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So both are good options. It's a unique situation, and there are two options, and the developer can build the units, which is great, simplifies the process for the town, and the town has a priority for funding affordable units, and this provides funds towards that effort.
Thank you very much. The Select Board and the Planning Board both recommend affirmative action on Article XII, and I believe that we will hear from Mr. Lee Smith on behalf of the Concord Housing Development Corporation.
Lee Smith, five thirty-six Hayward Mill Road. Madam Moderator, through you, please.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I am the co-chair of the Concord Housing Development Corporation. We're CHDC. CHDC is a nonprofit housing corporation established in 2006 at the request of the Select Board. It is charged with implementing alternatives for providing affordable housing in Concord. All Board members are volunteers and Concord residents. At our September meeting, our Board voted unanimously to support Article XII. CHDC views this as a source of significant... CHDC views this as a source of significant funds to be available for affordable housing purposes and that it is possible to create more than two additional affordable units with this money. CHDC has limited resources and presently does not have enough money on hand to be able to act to pursue opportunities for affordable housing. With access to these funds, CHDC could act quickly as opportunities arise, as they often do, to create additional units, including family housing and units for first-time homebuyers. Examples of these funds include construction of new affordable units, purchase of an existing unit that is at risk of being lost because an eligible purchaser cannot be found or because the affordable housing restriction on the property is at risk of termination, purchase of modest, relatively inexpensive property that can be rehabilitated and used as affordable housing instead of being demolished or renovated into an expensive higher-end home, payment to a developer or a buy-down in exchange for an affordable housing restriction on a unit that would not otherwise be affordable, and as a source of funding for the CHDC's Small Grant Program that reimburses eligible homeowners for critical home improvements that enable the resident to stay in their home and remain a resident of Concord. Without these funds, CHDC's ability to act quickly as these types of opportunities arise is severely limited. And as the case has been over the years, chances to save or create affordable units are lost. We ask for your support and to vote yes on Article 12. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll next hear from Mr. McBride, who is a developer of the Black Birch Project.
Jack McBride, 57 Everett Street.
Mr. McBride.
I'm also the President of Abode Builders and we're the developer and builder up at Black Birch. I'm not taking a position on this article or making any recommendation to you with regard to the article. We're very happy to be able to support the creation of affordable housing in either form, depending on how you, which one you choose tonight. Under the zoning bylaw, there was no requirement to do any affordable housing there and that's true with the PRD. We were fortunate that through the generosity of the landowner, Todd Pulis, and in consultation with Kevin Hurley, our land planner, and because of our commitment, long-term commitment to affordable housing as a company and individually, we were able to build three units of affordable housing in Phase One and propose two more in Phase Two. The town needs affordable housing. There's a lot of people in this room who have spent more time than I have and I've been in town 30 years and been involved with it and I'd like to recognize their efforts. And particularly you have the Concord Housing Foundation, who's been at it forever. You have the Concord Housing Development Corporation, who hasn't been around quite as long but has been working very hard to try to create affordable housing. You have the Concord Housing Authority. You have the staff of the Planning Department, who's been very creative and resourceful. And you have the Select Board and the Planning Board, who've always tried to find ways to do it. It's very difficult to build affordable housing in Concord with the land costs that we have. So whatever, I think you're going to hear some debate on what the best option is. And again, we would support either option. But the people who are working to do this in town need help from everybody, so I would encourage you beyond town meeting to try to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. Mr. Rothenmel from the Concord Housing Foundation, if you want to use microphone two back there, that's fine. Or microphone one's good, too.
Madam Moderator, my name is Terry Rothenmel, 330 Musketic Road, speaking for the Concord Housing Foundation.
Mr. Rothenmel.
The Concord Housing Foundation Board also unanimously voted to oppose this article. We are against accepting $1 million in buyout in the place of two planned units in the Black Birch Development. There is the state's count of what qualifies for its 40B program. And then there is what counts in Concord's own affordable housing program. Concord's housing achievements are not one-dimensional. In 2016, the Mass Housing Partnership gave Concord a Housing Hero Award for its longstanding, overall, affordable housing efforts. The award honored the variety of ways that Concord has pursued diversity through its own affordable housing goals. This award was not tied simply to Concord's performance in the state's 40B program. Not only has Concord provided the homes that our state counted, but more importantly, we have provided a wider range of homes that Concord counts. These two units will still count in Concord's program. Allowing buyouts by developers from promises made and approved project plans is a present we should not encourage. In seeking approval for future developments, we hope that builders may include provision for affordable housing in their plans. If we now start to buy, accept buyouts from these promises, it becomes too often a blow to affordability in Concord. A longstanding Concord goal is to spread our affordable housing throughout the town and in small developments. We have many affordable units that intentionally do not count towards the state's 40B program. Those units, designed for moderate incomes, help to make the economics work for smaller affordable housing developments. Preserving the units in Black Birch II helps us to have a few units, as in Black Birch before, Black Birch Four One. In a new Concord neighborhood, encouraging units in our future neighborhoods in Concord is a good way of enhancing affordability and diversity across Concord. Choose keeping our Concord units in hand over accepting the $1 million buyout. In December 2016, the town meeting voted to keep these two units over the buyout approach for good reasons and that is still the right choice. Concord Housing Foundation again urges your vote against this article.
Thank you, Mr. Rothenmel. We will now open the floor to questions and comments. Microphone number two.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane.
Ms. Felsham.
We've heard arguments both for and against. They are interesting and they point out again why we should not be taking these articles up under special town meeting but should rather have a regular process for considering all of the aspects of them. We have heard the town and other, and residents of the town advance at least two different ways of funding affordable housing, which have not yet been pursued, but for all I know may be pursued in annual town meeting next spring, making it unnecessary to take this particular action. I would urge a no vote so that we encourage people not to use the special town meeting process as a way to push things through before they can be properly considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Stephen Bader, 7 River Street.
Yes, sir.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of the Concord Carlisle League of Women Voters. At a meeting tonight, we took a vote to recommend a no vote on this article.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Cynthia Katz, 20 Conan Street. I have a question about, thank you. I have a question whether with the state changing, the way in which it looks at age-restricted units for affordable housing, will the Black Birch, all of the units in Black Birch not count toward the town's total number of units in future 40B developments?
Ms. Rust. The state's change would make the Black Birch units that were proposed, these two units, not count. So we're only talking about these two units.
But will the Black Birch units in totality be taken off the total of Concord's when they look at what our percentages?
None of the Black Birch units are counted in the affordable housing inventory now. And, right.
Microphone number one.
Holly Kratsley, 10 Edmunds Road.
Ms. Kratsley.
I'm opposed to this article because as both a prior member of the Housing Authority and a consulting architect to the Housing Authority, where I built four units of housing with them, I do not believe it would be possible to build two units of affordable housing for a million dollars if you include, because the land costs are so high, the construction costs are rising, and the legal fees, we had many to, for, most of the projects in the Housing Authority, when they go in to find new land, encounter NIMBY and have high legal fees. So I think this is not a win-win situation. This would be a loss. We couldn't replace these two units that we lose with that million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Rich Feely, 347 Lexington Road. I'm also on the Concord Housing Foundation. I think there's something very positive here tonight, which is the idea of an affordable housing fund. But this isn't the place to start. We've got two units in hand and as other people have said, it's very hard to find land to afford, that can be used for affordable housing. Let's take these two units, let's see what comes back from the Affordable Housing Committee that will report to the Select Board. And in the meantime, let's get two 55-plus families in these units because we can't change that. That's going to be 55-plus anyway. And I don't want to see us create a precedent where the easiest thing for a developer to do is give us money and not have to take affordable units.
Microphone number one.
Steve Carr, Mustafield Road, and one more representative from the Concord Housing Foundation. Stepping back and talking about the procedure of special meetings, as some people have expressed some concerns, I think this is a particularly not very good situation that is happening. This was voted on at the annual town meeting. The alternative of a million dollars or two units was discussed at that time. And I give the developer credit. He said he would do either. We voted on this. We're now six months later coming back with a proposal that for some reason rather we changed our mind. Now, at my age, I don't do change very well. I will agree that there are times when it is appropriate to change our minds and rethink things. But what's happened here? Two units. We have roughly 7,000 in Concord. Two units have gone out of the calculation. That's all. If we'd known about that those two units were going to count back when we did the town meeting, I'm sure the vote would have been the same. There's no reason to change here under these circumstances. And then coming to the substance of it, oh, and by the way, for those who have 10% in the mind, on their mind about that that's a goal that Concord should get to, some people would like even higher numbers, I think. But we're not at 10%. We're at 10% as counted by the state. The only way we get there is because Forest Ridge, if that's the right name of the development, which is 300 units, under the state's counting rules, if 25% of those units are affordable, namely 75 are affordable, we get to count 300. Okay? So we have 800 affordable units in town, 225 are because of that bogus counting that comes out of that. So we really are not, in real terms, near 10%. So two units we have in hand by a good developer, I say we take them. And, you know, when you start thinking about other things, the Giraud land, things like that, all sorts of problems come up and it takes years to get those other possibilities done. So I think we take the two units now.
Thank you very much. Microphone number four.
I am Robert Brown of 96 Forest Ridge Road.
Mr. Brown.
I would ask Madam Moderator, if before the vote is taken, you could have someone down in front, explain exactly what a yes vote on this warrant will accomplish and exactly what a no vote will accomplish. I know that everybody can read legal documents, but this is just to make sure everybody knows what yes means and what no means. Thank you.
Ms. Rust, would you like to do that for us?
I will certainly try. A no vote would go forward with the two units as permitted. A yes vote would start a process where the developer and the town would agree on how the million dollars would be paid and into which fund it would be paid. Is there more to it than that?
Well, there may be more to it than that because the money would be used exclusively for affordable housing. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And that's what I mean by the fund. The fund would be restricted to those purposes. As I mentioned, there was a number of kinds of structures for those funds in terms of a stability fund, a revolving fund, gift fund, and other things that the Select Board would take up, all of which would be restricted towards affordable housing purposes. And I think the million dollars might be paid in one or two installments over some period of time.
Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks like we're ready for a vote on Article 12. And once again, we need a two-thirds vote for passage of this article. Would all those in favor, please hold their ballots up? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion fails and I do so declare. Last but not least, Article 13. Mr. McCain moves that the town take affirmative action on Article 13 as printed in the warrant and the amount of $25,000, said amount to be raised and appropriated and expended under the direction of the town manager. And this is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Grant of easement. Do we have a second for the motion? I see that we do. And we will hear from Ms. Rasmussen.
Marsha Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management, speaking on behalf of the Select Board. Phase 2B of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail will follow the existing former railroad right-of-way connecting the Acton portion, which is Phase 2A, with the Concord portion, Phase 2C. 2B will begin at Wetherby Street in Acton, pass next to the horse barn, the police horse barn, and cross Route 2 with the bridge, cross Nishoba Brook with a bridge, and connect to the new parking lot off Commonwealth Ave, which is across from MCI Concord. This aerial shows the right-of-way outlined in red. As noted, the town needs to secure easements from the State Executive Office of Transportation and from the Department of Corrections. We didn't know about the Department of Corrections land until late last spring after the town warrant had closed, so this is why it is being taken up this evening. This slide notes the purposes for the easements: construction of the trail, clearing, grading, loam and seed, drainage, and paving. This portion of the preliminary plan, next slide, please, shows the location of the right-of-way. There's a small square area near Route 2 that is needed for drainage purposes and this is the only parcel under the control of the Department of Corrections. Everything else is through the Executive Office of Transportation. The language in the warrant mirrors the language approved by the 2016 Annual Town Meeting for the 2C portion of the trail in Concord. Mr. McCain moves affirmative action.
Thank you very much. And both the Select Board and the Finance Committee, as well as the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee, recommend affirmative action on Article 13. We'll open the floor for questions and comments. Microphone number four.
Nancy Brown, 96 Forest Ridge Road, once again speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters, which also recommends affirmative action on this article.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Seeing no one else at a microphone, it looks like we're ready for a vote. Because this is a grant of a property right, we do need a two-thirds vote on this. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by well more than two-thirds and I do so declare. And I'll take a motion for adjournment. And a second? Thank you. All those in favor? All those in favor? Anybody want to stay longer? Good night, all. Thank you very much.